Okay, good afternoon. This is the June 16, 2022 PM review session. There's no public testimony. We are going to call, discuss the following cases. 2020-27 BZ 403 Concord Avenue, the Bronx. 2019 296 BZ 84 Franklin Street, Manhattan. And the new cases, 2019 35 BZ 235 Beaumont Street, Brooklyn. 2019 196 BZ 41 East 20th Street, Manhattan. 2019 267 BZ 165 98 Basely Boulevard, Queens. And 2020-9 BZ 2611 128th Street, Queens. However, because of the delay of the morning calendar, we will take a break for 20 minutes.
20 minutes.
20 minutes, Madam Chair, right?
Yeah, so we'll be, well, the reality is we'll be back at 2:25, okay? Apologies to everyone, but we've been running continuously since 10 o'clock. Thank you very much. We'll be back in 20 minutes. Okay.
We're three.
We're three, it's true. You are, indeed. But we are going to be reading our comments.
We're four now.
Oh, hi, Darrell. Okay. Why don't we do that? We can get started and hopefully by the time we've finished with our comments, we have Commissioner Shonda. All right, let's get started.
Okay, this is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for June 16, 2 PM session. No public testimony is allowed during this review session. The next item to be discussed is 2020-27 BZ 403 Concord Avenue, the Bronx.
Okay, so again, this is a public review session, so I do see people in the waiting room. We cannot, we won't admit you, and I hope you're watching on YouTube. We won't admit you until the public hearing. But, and so up until now, the commissioners are going to discuss the projects, okay? So with respect to this application, a submission was made in late May, but unfortunately was not received in SharePoint until late Friday. I would ask that the applicant community always check with the project manager that the materials have been received and are visible to everyone at the agency as opposed to just in the email attachment. So that submission that was made late Friday includes properly bubbled drawings that we spoke about at the last hearing, as well as an updated discussion on the school's search for space. We also received a revised EAS. And I wanted to make sure that Tracy Benquet is okay with our revised EAS. The below note also needs to be added to the drawings. And I don't think it was added to the drawings, which is all transportation measures as described in the final environmental assessment statement attachment, the transportation with a seeker number 2OBSA075X, and school safety plan shall be implemented with final approval of measures to be determined by the Department of Transportation. That note has to be added to the plans. On the submission issue, no, sorry, I just said that. And then I understand that we'll need a final EAS with all the sign-offs. I don't know if we actually received that. Ms. Benquet, could you comment on that?
Yes, we will need the final EAS. We have all the sign-offs. And we will just need the final EAS and the note on the plans.
So that's, those are the only two outstanding issues. Okay. Great. All right. Any other comments from commissioners? I'll just go through. Commissioner Shonda?
No, I didn't have any problem. I don't know why. I was actually waiting for a good long time to get into this meeting. Scott, and I heard the tail bit of it, but I didn't have any additional comment.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
No, I'm happy that they put in the search criteria, and I have no more comments.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Sheta?
Nothing further from me. Thank you, Chair.
Great. And Commissioner Shabata?
I was satisfied with the submission, and nothing further.
Okay, great.
Okay, the next, move on, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Next item is 2019 296 BZ 84 Franklin Street, Manhattan. This is a review session.
Right, a review session, so we won't accept public testimony until after the review session. With respect to this one, accessibility floor plans were provided that were very helpful. But for the inaccessible floors, there are statements that services are duplicated on accessible floors without stating what and where these are. So I do want to say that we should have a note, not sort of note to counsel that the, that there should be some sort of statement that we, that the board is not determining, not making a determination on compliance with accessibility. But in addition to which, I really would like the applicant to go through which are duplicated services on which on the floors that are accessible versus not accessible. Also, let's see, we still need this certificate of no effect from the Landmarks Commission and they did provide massage therapist licenses that are current. Okay. Okay. Okay, Commissioner Shonda?
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification. The applicant has provided massage therapy license for 10. I think in the previous submission, it stated 11, so I just want to make sure it is 10. That massage therapist that would be working there and their 10 were provided. Also with, in the statement of fact, I think it would be helpful if the applicant revises it to reflect the revised mezzanine floor area.
They didn't do that, I thought they did that, okay.
No, I looked for it.
Sorry, I'm sorry, you had a, your voice was muffled there, can you say that again?
I looked for it, I didn't find it. Maybe I, I mean, the statement of fact was not provided, but the revised statement of fact, I'm looking at the original statement of fact.
Okay. I thought we had asked for that. Okay, all right. Okay, Commissioner Otley Brown?
No additional comments.
Okay. Commissioner Sheeta?
I just want to thank them, they submitted the FEMA map. It is no flood zone and my understanding is that the LPC approval is currently pending. So we're waiting, like you said, for the certificate of no effect.
Right, and Commissioner Shaveta?
Anything additional from me on this?
Okay.
Okay, move on?
Yes.
New cases, new cases. 2019 35 BZ 235 Beaumont Street, Brooklyn. This is a single-family home enlargement.
Yes, and this again is there only a review session, executive session. We don't take public testimony at this stage of the hearing, we take it after. So this is, we have proof of service of initial application to officials and proof of notice of this teleconference hearing with dial-in information to officials and neighbors. Community Board recommends approval with one opposed. We have one letter in support. There is a CCD1 code determination that has not been either approved or denied by DOB requesting reconsideration of the substantial improvement threshold that would subject this project to compliance with Appendix G. The site is in an AE11 flood zone. I'm not really sure what the purpose of submitting that to us is because there's no determination on whether it complies with the flood regulations. But if I understand the history of the site correctly, the building was already constructed with compliant conditions prior to 2014 and comes to the BSA to allow a floor area increase to permit the third floor addition. None of the existing perimeter walls or internal joists are being removed. So the Z, the CCD1 about Appendix G may be misplaced here. If anything, it would have applied to the building that was approved prior to 2014 when you did have to comply with Appendix G, so I'm not really understanding why we got that. The statement of facts says, states that the site is both 4,000 square feet and 4,160 square feet. One of them is wrong, the site survey and BSA zoning analysis, analysis, analysis. So I don't think it's 4,160 square feet. Similarly, the survey shows a front yard at 15.2 and 15.3 while the BSA zoning analysis sheet and the statement of facts shows it at 16 foot five inches and the ZD1 at 17 foot three inches. And side yards on the zoning analyses are shown at 10 feet while the survey shows 9.8 feet. So there's a lot of disconnect or discrepancy. The survey is in decimal points, so, and 5.6 feet is not the same as 5 foot 6 inches. So you need to be clear on this and the survey rules in terms of dimensions. So you need to rely on a survey. The statement of facts and the BSA zoning analysis sheet show the rear yard at 30 feet while the ZD1 shows it as a non-compliant 26-foot rear yard. The survey does not provide a dimension for the rear yard. The consistencies need to be corrected. When I did the math on the survey though, because it doesn't dimension the rear yard, but I took the measured front yard plus the measured building, I get something closer to 31 foot deep for the rear yard. I don't know what the answer is. The building is very tall for the neighborhood at 38 feet above grade since although the building is not being lifted, the height is being measured off of design flood elevation that is almost six feet above grade. Floor-to-ceiling heights are very generous at 10 feet and 11 feet and the section shows that some of the additional height is caused by the doubling up of the structure at the third floor. So they really are just adding this to an existing built roof. They're not, yeah, so they're not sort of removing the roof, the finished roofing and then treating that as the floor. They're adding another floor, so it adds another foot of height to the building and the floor-to-floor height is very high in that third floor. So I think it's too tall for the neighborhood, but you need to provide, the applicant needs to provide more on neighborhood character to support the proposal for this very tall house. The only requested waiver is for floor area and the FAR study shows other houses on the social block with floor area in excess of the requested .75 FAR. So Commissioner Shonda?
I had similar, sorry. Okay, yeah, I had similar comments with regards to discrepancy in the dimension between the survey, the ZD1 and the existing plan. And I actually, when I was trying to find out what the rear yard depth is, I looked at the survey and I measured 29 feet, so I think there are many ways of doing the number. But bottom line is it needs to be consistent across all the documents. And I had little difficulty in determining the proposed change because there isn't an existing plan that's provided. So it was very difficult to figure out, especially, you know, when the applicant is saying that the second floor, the increase in the floor, floor plan, floor area, sorry, on the second floor is because something is being filled in. But I don't know what the existing plan is of the second floor to know what is being filled in. And so I don't know if the portion of the second floor is completely open from ground floor to the second floor, which doesn't make sense. So I think there's a little bit of a confusion as I'm reading the statement and I'm looking at the plan as to how it can be even open. So some clarification is needed. And I would like the applicant to provide in the attic plant says that's where the new floor area is being added, is to demarcate the attic floor plan by the floor, the area of the floor that is below the height of five feet and the other that is above, so, and portion of the attic that has been therefore counted towards floor area. And I think that will also give me an idea of where the slope of the roof is happening and how tall the building is.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Otley Brown?
I think they need to clarify whether or not they're taking part of that eight-foot utility easement which appears in the survey and it appears as if they've enclosed the fence around four feet of that utility easement, which would mean the depth of this lot is 104 feet. However, the tax map shows the depth of the lot still being 100 feet. So they need to reconcile that. And if it is true that they've taken over four feet of that easement, they need to provide an amended tax map for it's that, that shows that they are entitled to 104-foot depth and then revise all of their paperwork accordingly.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheeta?
Thank you. The only thing I have additional to that is that the applicant need to proofread the statement of facts because on page one, it spells the lot area as 4,160. And then between parentheses, it said the numbers N as 4,000. So, and in other locations, on other locations describing the proposed, it says will occur and my understanding that the, the existing condition is that the house is built. So it's kind of confusing a little bit.
Sorry, it says what? What's the word you used?
It says will occur for the describing the building. It says the enlargement to a single-family will occur. So my, as far as I understand from the plan submitted, is that the enlargement is done already?
No, no, no.
It's not.
The, there was a 2014 building built. That's all that, that's the kind of stylistically what's the final result. And then they're asking for this floor area waiver to add a third floor. So when you look at it stylistically, you'll see this kind of a mansard that's added to the third floor that falls behind the dormers of the current two-story building, so.
Okay. So they just need to probably revise the lot area, spell that's 4,160 square feet on page one.
Okay, okay, and Commissioner Shaveta?
Chair, I had similar comments with regard to consistency between the document and the height of the building. I guess the only thing I would add is that 8.75 floor area doesn't seem like a great, a very large ask with regard to the surrounding community. And when they redo all the math, just to make sure that that's the actual floor area ask, I would ask them to look at that again.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, next item is 2019 196 BZ 41 East 20th Street, Manhattan. This is a PCE La Casa Despa.
And it's a legalization, so we have proof of service of initial application to officials. This application was properly noticed for the March 17th public hearing, including a lobby posting, but that hearing was postponed due to COVID. The application was noticed again for this teleconference hearing with dial-in information to officials and neighbors and by then certainly the gym was closed. Community Board waived its recommendation. We have one letter in support. We have fire department letter of no objection. I actually don't find in the folder Department of Investigation. Darrell, is this Darrell's case? If you could, yeah, Darrell, if you can find it and email it to me, I'd appreciate that because I didn't find it in the SharePoint. We have LPC Landmarks Commission Certificate of No Effect. One massage therapist license was provided, but there are four therapy rooms, so mustn't there be more massage therapists? The statement of facts has an error at page two stating that the applicant seeks an extension of term. It actually is kind of pervasive through the materials. This is a new PCE application. Page two is also missing the date of the expiration of the term of the previously issued permit and clarification about whether the prior permit under calendar number 31-96BZ was for the same operation and operator, or I mean item number. I have to, the wording in the statement of facts is actually rather sloppy generally as it wanders between requesting an extension of term and a new PCE. It doesn't look like when probably asked to revise the application, the applicant really read through its own materials before it resubmitted. I have to assume that the request is for a new special permit for the same establishment as was granted previously where the permit was allowed to expire without renewal and so they have to come to us for a new one. But I'm only guessing that because this kind of makes sense based on the materials, but it's not like it said that in the statement of facts. Similarly, the architect's letter doesn't explain on what it is being asked to opine, which I have to assume is the fact that the PCE is not accessible to persons with disabilities. Statement of facts makes no mention of this letter or of accessibility, so it's just kind of floating there. The architect's letter makes reference to a code provision without providing a copy of it and I'm not sure why it makes reference to this code provision and I didn't go to the trouble of looking up the code because really they should have provided that information to us. Drawing BSA O2 is described as the ADA accessibility plan showing turning radii in the therapy rooms, all of which are very odd since a person in a wheelchair cannot get to the top of the stairs and then, and there are even, there are steps also to the therapy rooms. So even if you were to get up the stairs, now you have to be brought up some more steps to go into a therapy room. So I don't understand the purpose of that ADA compliance drawing. Either the architect misunderstands its point or, yeah, I don't know what to say. And on the issue of accessibility and code compliance, I would defer to DOB and make sure we have a note on the drawings that directs DOB to review the application for compliance and our resolution should so state, because I know this is a very old PCE. Perhaps it was, it's, you know, an existing kind of non-complying as code condition. I see Darrell's hand up just a second. There are also, there's also open penalties that should be paid or settlement agreement arranged with the Environmental Control Board. And I'm going to recognize Darrell before I go to the commissioners. Go ahead.
Just want to say I forward you the email for the DOI.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Shonda?
I had similar, yeah, I had similar comment with regards to the number of massage therapy license and compared that to the number of rooms. With regards to the ADA access, I, yeah, I think I, I thought there is a, there is a way to get a waiver from the mayor's office, especially when you have a pre-existing 61 building and the business has been there for a long time. And so I don't know if they have that from prior use or prior operation.
Right, so you know, that's the thing is, they may not have even needed a waiver. This has been around for a really long time. It might have been sort of grandparented or whatever, but I don't want to get involved in unpacking this whole thing the way we normally do for new applications because I think this is really an old PCE that's been around for a long time. They let their special permit lapse and so by our terms of the zoning resolution, we're not allowed to renew it, right? So they have to come for a new one. Okay. I'm just looking at the, I see the DOI, DOI letter, thank you Darrell. Okay, so Commissioner Otley Brown?
I also had the question about the accessibility. I also have the question about the accessibility without the elevator or chairlift.
And Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I had the same thing. I struggled actually. It took me like 15 minutes trying to figure out the accessibility thing, probably because I'm not an architect and I wasn't successful. So I ended up putting it as a no. The other thing is on page six of the statement of facts, like close to the end, before the evaluations, it says that moreover, there are no residential uses within the premises. And that was my understanding until I looked at the zoning analysis form. And it says if a residential and it lists maximum permitted 11,500, but it lists existing as 2,186. So I'm not sure, am I missing something? Is there a residential there or do we have residential or no?
I thought the, I thought the applicant stated the third floor has an office and a caretaker's unit.
Yeah.
That was my understanding. So why, why would the zoning analysis form has residential as existing?
Because the caretaker, you're saying, why are you characterizing a caretaker's unit as residential when it's a caretaker's unit? Is that what you mean?
Doesn't caretaker's unit is accessory use?
It's an accessory use, but I'm, I'm asking what Commissioner Sheta's question is. Is it that-
Is caretaker considered as residential?
Right. Well, so, you know, when we say residential, the question with respect to the PCEs is, is someone sleeping there and at 6:00 AM? Oh, because this is a spa, so it's really a different thing, right? At 6:00 AM, is somebody lifting weights and dropping them down so it throws you out of bed, right? And that's really what we talk about. So whether or not it's characterized as a caretaker, as an apartment or a loft, whatever, I think that's what we look at. In this case, though, it's a, it's a spa and you get massages. And unless they're painful and people are screaming, I'm not sure what kind of noise there would be that we would be concerned about. Okay, Commissioner Shaveta?
I have the same concerns with regard to accessibility, but I have nothing other to add.
Okay. Thank you. Right.
Next item is 2019 267BZ 16598 Basely Boulevard, Queens.
Right, okay. With this one, also a legalization, we have proof of service of initial application for, to officials. This application, like the one previously, was properly noticed for the March 17th hearing, including a lobby posting, but that hearing was postponed due to COVID shutdown. It was noticed again for this teleconference hearing with dial-in information to officials and neighbors. The community board recommends approval. We have one letter in support. We have DOI on this one. We have a conditional letter of no objection from the fire department, basically requiring a public assembly application to be filed and approved by Department of Buildings and noting that there is a note on the drawing that the proposed new fire alarm system shall be connected to the main building fire alarm panel. There, there seems to be a missing sentence in the statement of facts or a missing paragraph at the top of page three. It just sort of starts mid-sentence. The statement of fact states that this is a legalization, but doesn't tell us when the PC opened. Acoustical material information and acoustical plan was provided. Thank you. And they do need to provide a first floor and second floor plan indicating the location of egress to the street and location of elevator access from the street to the PC. We always require this because we want to understand how does a disabled person get to the gym and/or the PC? And also in the event of a fire, how do the two means of egress get outside? So, okay, so that's, that's it. So Commissioner Shonda?
Okay. The site plan provided does not include the entire zoning lot. It's not very clear if it's the large super block, that's the zoning lot and which includes residential and commercial. And in this entire zoning lot, they should also show the location of the parking for the commercial because the part of the lot is in a zoning lot. I think it's in a C42 and in an R6. And so we need to make sure that, I think this is what, in the past, we had always made sure that the parking spaces within the commercial. So that, also the zoning analysis sheet does not provide the number of parking spaces provided for the zoning lot. And as you mentioned, the, the plan should include the egress route, the ADA access, and therefore should show the first and the second floor plan and, and show the main entrance to the facility or the building structure itself.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Otley Brown?
I believe I read that the PC was opened on November 23rd, 2019 in the paperwork.
Okay, thanks.
And I don't have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
I having nothing, I have nothing additional on this. Thank you.
And Commissioner Shaveta?
Nothing additional on this. Thank you.
Okay, move on?
Yes.
Final item is 2020-9BZ 2611 123rd Street, Queens. It's a public, public review session, no testimony.
Right. We have proof of service of initial application to officials and have notice of this teleconference with dial-in information to officials and neighbors. Community Board recommends approval with two opposed. We have one letter in opposition complaining about this property owner being a bad neighbor and also about the use of residential lots for non-owner occupied dwellings. That's one of the complaints. Three other letters in opposition express concern about congestion and parking. There is one letter in support. This is a 20 by 97-foot lot. And the claim is that it is unique, but I don't see a discussion about uniqueness in the statement of facts. The uniqueness study map has no written explanation that I found, maybe I missed it. But, but appears to indicate there is only one other vacant lot in the study area of equivalent lot area. And in fact, maybe only one other vacant lot besides that one at all in the study area. The percentage of lots in the study area chart need to be tied to a map with a clear listing of applicable tax lots. I'm not sure actually what the study is attempting to establish. There needed to have been an explanation about what was attached and what it means. We also need proof that the lot has not been held in common ownership with a neighbor. The proposal is a zero side yard building where a two-foot and eight-foot side yard are required minimums. We had a recent application with a similar request on a 20-foot wide lot. And we asked that the applicant justify the waiver that eliminates the side yards entirely rather than develop a 17-foot wide building with at least one three-foot side yard. So, and we just had yesterday another application for unrelated type of application. It's a GCL 36 waiver where the developer is willingly constructing 17-foot wide houses. So this is, you know, I'm, I'm always struggling between what one community claims is viable and another one claims isn't viable. So that's my question, why not a three-foot side yard and a 17-foot wide building? Like, how are they justifying that this should go lot line to lot line? And, and the three foot is enough to allow you access to the rear, et cetera. The, the principal problem with the site is its narrowness, which causes an as-of-right building to be only 10-foot wide. But many other waivers are being requested in addition to the side yard waiver. They're requesting FAR waiver density to allow two units instead of one, two apartments instead of one, height and setback and parking location waivers. These requested waivers have to be justified since it isn't clear that the lot prevents compliance with the applicable regulations. I note there is a street widening line that pushes the building back five feet from its property line in addition to the required front yard setback. So maybe that's something that would be stated as preventing the development of the site properly. I, I don't know because I didn't look into it more deeply. Furthermore, the resulting building typology has to be justified to be in conformance with neighborhood character, including the deep front yard setback with parking pad because they're pulling the building all the way back. And, you know, these are not hard to do. You have to go around the neighborhood and see, are there other buildings with parking pads? Is that a typical of the neighborhood? And so that's a way of addressing neighborhood character. Commissioner Shonda?
Okay. Um, I agree with you that the uniqueness study was lacking in information. The applicant needs to provide evidence and, and it has to be supported by narratives to indicate and justify that the site is unique. Based on my very quick look at the ZOLA map and from my site visit, I really did not see any vacant sites in the study area. And they, I mean, definitely not of that. Actually, no, I didn't see any in the residential zone. I did not see any vacant sites. So I think that, that, that is one aspect of it. But then the narrowness and all of those, those all need to be clearly stated. The, with regards to the neighborhood character, they're also, the applicant needs to do a lot more analysis and provide the justification. Since they're asking for so many waivers, they really need to walk us through each one of the waivers and kind of indicate why it is needed and where the neighborhood context would match. Or, or if it is off, how off is it and would it be detrimental? Or would it, would it negate the neighborhood character? So they, based on that, they need to provide a detailed narrative and analysis for each of the components for which the waiver is being sought. I mean, very quickly, I, I did my analysis from looking at the ZOLA map. There are a lot of lots that have FAR over 0.75. They just need to provide a chart, provide a map that goes with it. The building typology in this area varies significantly. You have a mix of detached, semi-detached and attached homes that has been, they were all built mostly 1925 and then some in 1980s. And I think that was the last set of development one saw in that area. And most of the 1985 developments were all attached homes. So because of that and the rezoning of R4A that happened, happened much later than these developments. So pretty much, I would say, most of these buildings are non-complying in terms of many of the regulations of R4A, especially side yard requirements. I don't think most of the lots there meet the side yard requirements. And so even where side yard is provided or even there is a shared side yard, you know, they tend to be in the range of three, three to, three feet to four feet wide. So I think those are the analysis. This is just my quick look at the photographs and the site visits and, and the maps. I think the applicant needs to provide a lot more information and there is inadequate information to make those arguments. And also the lot sizes do not comply, the existing lot sizes do not comply with R4A. That leads to the question of if the existing buildings that are there, they are built on a lot sizes that are less than 20 feet wide and the applicant is saying that 20 feet is a narrow, a narrow lot and cannot build an adequate building, then I think they need to justify what is the typical building types, building length, building widths that they are seeing and why even providing some amount of side yard is not at all feasible.
Mm-hmm.
To establish, yeah, to establish that. I just want to go back to the design of the building. I don't know if the applicant meets the planting requirement of zoning resolution 2564. So that analysis needs to be provided. Also in terms of the design and the unit layout, the applicant is proposing two units. And if you notice that there is an entrance provided to the basement level upgrade from the front yard. And I think if the applicant provides the living room, dining room, kitchen and the basement level, since it has an access on the front yard and the bedrooms above, you actually get a better layout of the units. And more importantly, it also prevents the possibility of a misuse of the basement bedroom being used as a third rental unit.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Otley Brown?
So I have a completely different take on this case.
Oh, okay.
When I read the statement, I noticed that he did not speak of the uniqueness as a narrow vacant lot. He spoke of the uniqueness as simply a narrow lot. And then went on to base his uniqueness study on looking at other lots that were narrow lots. And so he ends up with, out of 86 lots within a 400-foot radius, 24 of them are like his in that they are 20 feet wide or less. And that means 27% of the lots are like his. So therefore, there's no uniqueness based on what he stated. So I was thinking to myself, how could he differentiate himself? And the only way to differentiate himself from them would be to say that he's vacant. However, at the moment, he is not vacant. So he really had to refine his argument. There's an automotive business on that lot.
Right.
So he has to reorganize his statement to take into account the history of the lot, the uniqueness finding and try and prove this point that way. Now, I also wanted to bring to everyone's attention that this lot is not in the same configuration as pre-61. Pre-61, this was a through lot that was 100, it was 20 feet by 195 feet. I don't know if everybody caught that. And so while the uniqueness finding does, is not disturbed by that fact, his ask for floor area and extra dwelling units actually is disturbed by that fact because if the lot was in its original configuration and had double the amount of, of lot area, he wouldn't need a floor area ask and he also wouldn't need a dwelling unit ask. And so my question is, does this run up against the self-created hardship?
I didn't think that. Sorry, just, I, I didn't see that. Where did you find that the pre-61 was a through lot? Did you-
It was in the sta-
Yeah, it was in the statement in the self-created where it says the site, the width of it was narrow from 1935 and it was divided in length in 1966.
Right.
And so the depth of the lot reduced from 194 feet to 97 feet.
Okay, I'm sorry. I must not have read that part. Okay, thank you. Keep going. Sorry.
So, and then my other question has to do with his character finding. He talks about a side yard study. And while I do know what he's getting at in terms of laying the groundwork for not having a side yard, I found the study unclear.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. Right, I, I have a question about that because now that you mentioned it's not a vacant lot. I was looking at the history of the lot in terms of its commercial use. And the argument is, um, we rented it, the owner rented it for this many years as a this. Then it was vacant for this much time. Then they rented it for this many years as a that, then it was vacant. And as you can see, it's been hard to rent it. So I don't know whether they've abandoned now because it seems like they'd abandoned already their commercial use. I, I don't know the question. But you could argue that the lot is in a better position than all the other lots because it has a commercially non-conforming use status where you could make the choice between residential and commercial. And, but on the other hand, like what is the envelope that's allowed to be built on that lot as a non-conforming use? It's basically an open lot, right? So with a small structure on it.
I think you definitely make a good point there. I believe it's really for him to make. He's got to reorganize his statement to address all of those issues.
Okay.
And then if he ultimately arrives on- And then if he ultimately arrives on, I would like this to be analyzed as if it is a narrow vacant lot, then he also has to reorganize his FAR statement to highlight the fact that he is one of maybe one or two narrow vacant lots. And then he really has to address the self-created hardship in terms of what he's asking for and what was done to the lot post nineteen sixty-one.
Okay.
Can I just jump in? I think, yeah, so you're right. I did see the site being used. It is being used for auto repair type of purposes. And this raises the question of, and since the site in the, over the years has been used for some kind of manufacturing related use, does the site require any cleanup for it to be used as a residential?
That's a good point. So, yeah, so and there's an existing eighteen by forty-seven foot long structure on the site. So it's not, as you say, it's not vacant. It's, I actually thought it was more of an open lot, but it's not vacant. It has a structure that was used, just to go back through the history, an upholstery business, a construction material storage business, a granite countertop fabricator, and now mechanic repair shop. So arguably, it's got a viable use right there. So that's, that's a problem because a variance is supposed to cure the inability to use the site for any viable use, right? Now, it's been, they said, sorry, twenty-eighteen to present, it's mechanic repair shop. So they have not abandoned the commercial use unless they took it back. It was abandoned and it was abandoned from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen, but sort of reclaimed. So as long as nobody picked it up, I suppose they got to revest. I mean, I don't know how DOB views that. Occupying it. So, yeah. Thank you. Thank you both of you for picking that up. Okay. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dara, for the brief, like, review for that application. I've been to the site and I believe that commercial use, the automobile repair is still active. Regarding the parking, the parking in that area is really tough. I circled the block like four times. And at the end of the day, I couldn't even park. I just emailed you a picture to the board with, this is, that was the only picture I was able to like take during my visit. And I even took it from the car. So that's how tough the parking in the area was for me. Regarding, regarding the use, I'm not sure if the existing use is legal. So this is, this is one thing. The, usually with, with narrow lots, the burden of that narrowness is that the applicant is not able to use the entire as of right floor area. On this application, it's kind of odd for me that they are not just asking us for relief to use the as of right, but they want to go beyond that. So they are asking for a floor area waiver as well. The other thing is, if you look at the configuration of the building, the design of the building, the cellar floor is kind of, I call this like a dummy cellar floor. Let's just call it a cellar floor. But it's not that deep below grade. It's slightly below grade. So I understand by applying zoning resolution, it doesn't count as a floor area, but it's, it's very close.
No. Sorry, it counts as floor area. Reason they do basements is because sometimes it has to do with whether you have to put an elevator in or whether it shifts the building code. Because now it would be a three-story building, whereas the basement isn't counted as story. It's used a lot of the times to avoid something in the building code. So I'm not why they're doing it in this particular case, but I often see basements used as a way to get around something code-related, not usually zoning-related.
Right. So in this case, this is a basement and the floor area from the basement is being counted towards.
Always does.
Yeah. Basement floor area is always counted, not cellar, but basement is. So that's why they're also able to provide a habitable space in the basement.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And finally, I'm asking for a survey because I haven't seen a survey to the, in the folder, in the submitted folder.
Okay. So wait a minute. Can you go back about your statement about the basement? You're just saying because it's only a couple of feet down and like, what's the point?
I thought my, my understanding was that they are trying to take zoning resolution by saying we're building a basement to avoid counting this against floor area. But since they are, it is counted, I back off on that.
Yeah. But there is a reason. It may be also something to do with the staircase, but this is not a multiple dwelling. So I'm not, I'm not really sure why they're treating it as a basement.
Yeah, and we need to, they need to provide us with a cross-section in the building because they just provided us with a longitude in a section, but no cross-section in the building.
You're saying, you're saying a short section. There's a long, there's a longitude, a lateral.
Yes, and I support the idea of leaving, leaving a small side yard is of course better than leaving nothing. So if they can live with a four feet or three feet side yard, that would be much better for me than nothing.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you, Chair. The applicant, in my opinion, the applicant needs to go through the findings of seventeen twenty-one and in writing, go through those findings before submission. This lot, in my opinion, was in fact held in common ownership when an adjoining lot, as this was once through, a through lot. I question the applicant as to whether or not this factor in and of itself would be a complete bar to relieve. Further, particularly when one considers the self-created hardship and the fact that this property is currently in use and has a history of use, I think that, I wonder if this would be dispositive. And there has been little argument, if any, as there being some sort of change in circumstances in the neighborhood that has made this a, an actual hardship. Now, if the, if the applicant were to overcome these aforementioned hurdles, there's very little to show that a lesser variance here is not appropriate. And I say this with particular attention to the side yards, and I believe that has been mentioned by each of the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any last minute, anything from anyone? Okay, great. All right, we can move to the hearing, I think, right?
Yes, this is the last case. We now commence with the BSA public hearing for June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two PM. The first case is twenty twenty twenty-seven, BZ four oh three Concord Avenue. The applicants for that case, please call in.
Sheldon Lobel's office, we have two people in the waiting room. I don't know whether they're related to this case. Kathleen Giorgio and someone with the identification of twenty-sixth Avenue.
Those might be for Boncilio's case.
So, yes. There we go. Faye Ann. Okay, she's coming on for Sheldon Lobel's office. Is, and Matthew Carmody, is he with Sheldon Lobel?
Yes.
No, familiar. So we have the here. Okay, Ms. Batan, when you can hear us, please state your name.
Faye Baton from Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant. You mentioned Matt Carmody. Someone from AKR should be on as well.
You're already.
Okay. Um, so I don't know if we need to.
I have to be sworn in. You have to be sworn in. Do I wait for the other guy?
No, they're in, they're in.
Okay. Do you affirm to, to raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
All right, so.
Sorry, I just admitted civic builders. That's your team also, right?
Yes.
All right.
I don't think many people will actually be speaking for this, hopefully. So Faye Baton from Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant. We attended the review session. I know that I spoke to Tracy. She should have the final EBS.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't realize there was the new submission chair. So I looked it over and it is, it looks good.
And so.
All the sign-offs, in other words.
Yes, it has all the sign-offs. So we would just need the note now on the plans.
We received the note. Tracy had sent over the note so we could make those changes on the plans as soon as possible.
Okay.
So I think those are the outstanding issues.
Yes. Okay, then. So then I would like to go to the public. I don't know if any of the people in the waiting room are here for this application. I hope so. Tony, can you read the application number, please?
Sure. It's twenty twenty twenty-seven BZ four oh three Concord Avenue, the Bronx.
Okay, so I'd like to ask for any member of the public who would like to speak on this application to call in. Call phone number six four six five five eight eight six five six. Meeting ID number nine one six six seven six six one six seven six. I note that there are people in the waiting room. And if I, and I don't know who they are or why they're in the waiting room, so I'm going to admit them. And if they don't want to be recognized for this application, the Concord, the school on Concord Avenue, then you should go out of the waiting room. So I have Kathleen Giorgio, someone identified as one two three oh six twenty-sixth Avenue, and someone identified as QN oh seven, which I'm thinking is Queens Board seven.
That's for, that's for the last BZ case.
So, so none of these people probably should be admitted, but I don't know what else to do. So, okay, I'm going to admit them. And then we'll remove them. Mr., Ms. Giorgio, if you can hear, please tell us who you, which application you are here to speak on. I don't know. Kathleen Giorgio? Can you hear?
I'm trying to see if she's one of those people.
Kathleen Giorgio, if you, oh, she's connecting. Kathleen Giorgio, if you are here to speak on the Concord, four oh three Concord Avenue, then you're properly in front of us. Otherwise, we're going to send you back to the waiting room. If you can hear, please speak. No? Okay, I'm going to send you back to the waiting room. We also have someone at, identified as one two three oh six twenty-sixth Avenue, who I am admitting and I hope that you are going to be speaking on four oh three Concord Avenue in the Bronx. When you can hear us, please state your name. They're connecting to audio. Connection is very slow. We have a whole bunch of people in the waiting room and I'm quite confused about why.
Well, I know this community board seven has, you know, the chair and all of them who are waiting to speak on their in the wrong case. Well, Jella and I emailed them, so I don't know what else to say.
Okay, so I'm going to announce again, anyone who is in the waiting room, who is not calling in for four, the Concord Avenue in the Bronx, you need to get out of the waiting room and, and continue to watch us on the YouTube video and call in when the application that you're interested in is, is called. But right now, the only testimony we want to hear is for four oh three Concord Avenue in the Bronx. So I'm going to go again because there are people in the waiting room and I don't know what to say. So we have someone who identifies as Rex. I'm going to let that person in from the waiting room. I don't think he's, okay. Somebody identifying as Rex, please state your name. Somebody identifying as Rex. Okay, now I see in Zoom, a person identifying as one two three oh six twenty-sixth Avenue. Can you unmute yourself, please, and state what application you're here to speak on? Unmute yourself, please. Oh, this is a problem. Unmute yourself, please. What application are you here to speak on?
About my neighbor. He needs to build a building, like three-floor building.
Tell us the address of the building that you're here to speak on.
Okay, my building or the other building, the complaint.
Are you here to speak on four oh three Concord Avenue in the Bronx? It's a school?
No.
No, all right. I'm sending you back to the waiting room. You called in far too early and you shouldn't be here. So you need to listen to the YouTube video and only call in when we call your case, okay? I'm going to send you back to the waiting room now.
Okay.
It's a problem because I have a lot of names here. All right, we have, I'm admitting somebody who's identifying as seven one eight seven four one.
I have a feeling that's the Queens, too.
Yeah, hello?
Yes, so who's seven one eight three five?
Yeah, I was scrolling up about the, the College Point one BSA, twenty twenty dash nine BZ, twenty-six dash eleven hundred twenty-third street.
Okay, so you're, you're too early. I'm going to send you back to the waiting room.
Okay, we're too early? Okay. Thank you, by the way. I'm from the College Point Civic and Tax Base Association.
All right, sir. Can you please hang up? Don't call in. Listen to the YouTube video. We're not going to call your case for maybe thirty minutes.
Okay, four o'clock. All right, you got it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, one last person. I don't know. All right, I think that's everyone. We're going to need to figure out another way of doing this. The city council actually has people register to speak and I think we're going to have to do that when there's public testimony because it's impossible to tell. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to go back to discussing four oh three Concord Avenue. I'm sorry for this confusion. It's a never-ending learning process. Okay, so I think actually we have everything we need. And I would like to, I think, unless Tracy Benquet tells us otherwise, I think we can close this hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, commissioners, you're okay with us closing this hearing? I get smiles and nods. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And this will be heard at the next hearing for the decision?
I think we, is this the one we reserved?
For the thirtieth, you mean?
I'm not sure if we reserved that. Anyway, the next hearing is when we will make a decision. I'm not sure if it's for the thirtieth, but we'll, we'll let you know as soon as possible. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you to all the commissioners. And thank you, I just want to say thank you to the staff for all the project managers for pushing this through and we will get over those plans as soon as possible with the note.
Thank you. And thank you to your whole team for being so cooperative. Thank you, and thank you to your whole team for being so cooperative.
Thank you.
All right, okay, the next item is 2019296BZ, 84 Franklin Street, Manhattan.
Okay, this is Todd Dale.
Madam Chair? When the, when this case starts, I just want to clarify a statement that I've made for this during the executive session.
Okay. So will, when someone from Roth Krug gets on? Say them again. You're not doing the invite, though, right? No. Oops. There we go. No, that's not it. So there's one person in the waiting room who needs to get out of the waiting room. 26th Avenue, we are not hearing the case that you are calling in for. We're hearing that later. So you should hang up. Do we have someone contacting the applicant? Who is this applicant? I mean, I know it's Roth Krug, but is, who is it? Here, Todd, okay. State your name, Mr. Dale, when you're ready, when you hear us. You're muted, by the way.
I am, I'm muted now, sorry, Todd Dale for that. My apologies, I was using the morning Zoom connection number and forgot to change.
Okay, happens to the best of us. Before you proceed, I just want, Commissioner Shonda wanted to correct something she said earlier about this application.
So what, when I had stated that the statement of fact should be corrected, yes, it does reflect the mezzanine floor area, but it reflected the old mezzanine floor area and not the revised mezzanine floor area. That's it.
Okay, all right. Proceed, Mr. Dale.
Wait, do you have to be sworn in?
Sorry, sworn in, sorry, sir.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do so affirm.
Please proceed.
So I did listen to review session, starting with the comment from Commissioner Chanda. We can submit a revised statement of facts that changes the mezzanine floor area from the 634 in the statement to the 804, which is the corrected total on the plans. So we can submit that statement. There was also a question regarding the massage therapist license. It is correct, there are 10 current therapists at the site. One person has, during the current circumstances, left employment. And just to affirm for the board, this site regularly ensures that everyone is properly licensed by the state, but there is turnover, and under, you know, current issues, it's, it's likely that there will be some staff changeover also. But the 10 submitted reflect the current therapists, and the operator is aware of any condition that any future employees who are therapists would need to be state licensed. I think the other question, another question that came up was regarding the accessibility plans. I will get more detailed information from the operator as far as the specific services, but generally, the two services they offer are the templariums, which are the various temperature bathing pools, and then the massage services. Those are available on ADA accessible levels. But since we're going to be submitting the statement, we can include in the cover letter perhaps a little bit more detail with respect to the services on the, the two levels that aren't accessible. And we understand the chair's comment about that any grant of this resolution or this application should be forthcoming wouldn't, would, would not mean accessibility compliance, and that still would need to be reviewed by DOB. And I think the last item that was raised was with respect to the landmarks. Just to confirm, that is still pending before LPC. I have a docket number. Unfortunately, because of current circumstances, hearings are proceeding at a slower pace, and we're not quite sure when that might be done. I know normally the board likes to have the CNE as part of the record. I do understand that, you know, should everything else be satisfied and this were closed, that we do need to submit the statement, the revised statement and the explanation. If an LPC approval came through during the interim, we would submit that also. But I would just ask if the board would consider, because of administrative delays with the other agencies, if for this particular case, you know, if everything else were satisfied and a decision date were set in the future, that the board would consider granting on condition that the CNE must be issued and could reference the docket number, only because for this particular site, they are anxious to try and move forward as best they can with finishing the interior work. Obviously, business has been affected, you know, due to the virus. So I would just throw that out there as a possibility, if that's something the board can consider.
So here, this is my question. So this had, this didn't open prior to March, is that correct?
The, the, the 88 Franklin is open, 84 Franklin did not open. You are correct. So that the enlargement did not open, right?
Enlargement didn't open, and, and so, yeah, I understand. And be, I mean, I think this is an interesting one, because you already have this functioning PCE that this is joining, right? So it's not like it's a brand new PCE. Yeah, maybe what could, maybe something from, so it's a certificate of no effect. I'm wondering whether we could re, even reach out to landmarks and just get a kind of email from them that they don't object to us proceeding with the, something, we could probably do that. Because I don't want to hold up a chance that a business actually gets going again. And construction is allowed to recommence. Have they been able to recommence?
I don't know if they recommenced. They did do some brief alteration in the building before this started. It was not obviously open for business. They did do some alteration, and then everything was on hold. I don't know what the, you know, up to the minute status is. What I can say, though, is I can provide to the project number manager, I have the docket number from LPC. I also have the email contact with the specific person at LPC who is working on it, and I could provide that to the project manager. As I said, we're hopeful something could, you know, be provided prior to the decision date. But in case it can't, is a, is an alternative, we would throw that out.
Okay. Okay. Great, thank you. All right, so the, so really, other than that, the main issue is the accessibility duplication of the accessible floors.
And the statement that will correct.
Right, okay, great. All right, then. I'm fearful about who's going to show up in the waiting room now, but we're just speaking right now only on application 2019-296BZ, 84-84 Franklin Street. Is that correct? 84, 84.
84-88 Franklin Street.
84 Franklin.
84 Franklin. 84 Franklin Street in Manhattan. Please do not call in about any other application, but if you'd like to speak on 84 Franklin Street, please call in. Okay. So how much time do you need to submit this material?
We could submit the statement and the additional information about the, the, the levels by the end of the week.
Okay, so let's just say to, only needs two weeks, or something like that. Okay. Okay. And also, you, you know that fire department has a condition on the fire alarm install that would be on alerting our own council. That would be a condition of our approval, right?
Okay.
Understood? And for Todd also, do you understand that that's?
Understood, and I, we agree, I think we agreed to that in the cover letter, but yes, we agree to the condition.
Great, all right, then. So then, I think, I'm okay with closing this. Is everyone okay with closing this? Are we okay to close it, even though we have a, we don't have the CNE from LPC? We could reopen if LPC has an objection, is that all right?
Yeah, I think since it's not, it's, the work is interior. Exterior work is not going to affect the building, so.
Well, that's what LPC's CNEs are about. They look to see whether interior work will affect the building, so. All right, so I'd just say it's kind of like a tentative close, unless we have an objection from LPC, okay? And then, just to, Vinroy Bell, our project manager, this is, get in touch with our council, and you'll send an email to LPC's general counsel asking for their sort of blessing that we can proceed with this application, even absent the certificate of no effect, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So, so it could be something either, or Chase or, or Kurt would reach out to LPC's council, okay?
Okay.
Thanks. All right, then, so we're marching to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rattley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Vinroy, your hand is still up. Was there something you wanted to say? But you're muted.
Yeah, I was trying to get rid of it, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get, get it down.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
The next item is 201935BZ, new case, 235 Beaumont Street in Brooklyn.
That's another, this is another PCE special permit. There is someone in the waiting room, but only identified by a phone number.
This is a single family home enlargement.
This is for the single family home.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is, sorry, sorry. Single family home enlargement, not the variance. This is 235 Beaumont Street, Brooklyn. I'm going to admit this person whose last three digits are 284, but I don't know if this is related to this application. So please turn off your YouTube video and the.
Hi.
Hi, who is it?
Hello. Elise.
Oh, okay. Okay, state your name, please.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik PC.
Did you have trouble getting in on Zoom?
Yeah, I got logged out. And yesterday I had trouble with the muting, so I called in to make sure it worked.
I had locked the meeting while we were getting a lot of call ins for the wrong application.
So sorry. Okay, so normally that wouldn't happen. Sorry, we're, we're going to have to figure out another way to handle when there's a public testimony. So, okay, go ahead, Elise, or go ahead, Tony.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you very much. I believe Mr. Alexander Lotovsky is going to be on the call. He's the architect, but if he doesn't make it in, we're going to have another hearing anyway, and we're going to address most of the comments and writing. But we can certainly add the, ask the surveyor to add the rear, because I, everybody calculated it and got different calculations. I also think that maybe the statement of facts that you looked at and the updated statement of facts were off, because I had even different numbers on my most updated statement of facts than you guys had, but we'll clarify that in the next submission.
Okay, so before you go, somebody with last four digits, last three digits, 71. Name. Last four digits, 741. Hello? I'm muting.
Yes, hello, this is Alex with Streetscape.
Yeah, that's my architect. Yes.
Before you go on, can you spell your name, because it's only a phone number? Again?
Alexander Lotovsky, L-O-T-O-V-S-K-Y.
Okay, let me sway you in, Mr. Lotovsky. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Fine, proceed.
So I was just saying that the rear yard can be added to the survey, and then we can check all the numbers to make sure that what's on the plans and what's on the survey all, all matches, and any updated ZD1 also matches. And in addition to the fact that we can give, instead of just the ZD1, we can provide you with existing, or a more clear existing plan, so you can see what we're building. Because I know that was confusing for the board. And then in terms of height, did you see the 3D streetscape in the notice of comment? Well, I can resubmit the 3D streetscape. I think in the 3D streetscape, you can see that the home rises only bit, a little bit higher than its neighbors. It, it fits in pretty well, but we can make that argument larger and resubmit the 3D streetscape, so you can see what the house looks like next to its neighbors.
But it's not just streetscape, and I see Commissioner Rattley Brown's hand up.
Hard to hear you, sorry.
Yeah, I'm muting him because he's walking or outside or something. Okay, with respect to the 3D, it's not just that. It's what are the heights of the area buildings? We do this all the time, right, to do a streetscape? Is that, is that what you're talking about? The 3D streetscape or something else?
The 3D streetscape, we were, is, we have multiple things, but we can add more homes. 3D streetscape just shows the homes on either side and what the home will look like in terms of homes on each side. But we can, in addition to that, I'll substantiate the argument with more homes that are similarly sized on the block. But that was just to show you what it looked like.
Okay, so we're talking about the 3D perspective, which we do have, which was submitted, but it only shows the two, one house on either side, and one of them is completely wrapped in scaffolding, so you don't actually know anything about that building. That, for everyone's information, was submitted on April 20th. And Commissioner Rattley Brown, your hands up. Go ahead.
Yes, this was a comment in response to the first statement that Ms. Foladere made about getting the surveyor to include the rear easement into their lot. Are you going to apply for a new tax map that reflects that? Otherwise, there's no way of knowing whether you have proof that you actually own that.
Okay. We will clarify whether we incorporate the easement or we don't incorporate the easement. I believe all the Manhattan beaches have an eight foot or eight inch, maybe it's eight foot easement in the rear, but we'll look into that.
Right, and some of the properties have actually purchased or taken control. You know, they say they've purchased the portion of the easement behind their lot, but they've always formalized that with a tax map alteration that shows a larger lot.
Okay, we will certainly look into that and clarify if we have done that or not done that. This is just a third floor eas, a, a third floor enlargement. That's the intent of this application. It does have a, as everybody noticed, it does have a pretty recently built existing home on the lot.
Right, that measures the 30 foot rear yard from absent the easement. So it's, it's forward of the easement lot.
We have to clarify that.
Last or hand up, go ahead.
Hello? Hi. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Okay. So I just noticed this, looking at the perspective, the proposed condition seems like there would be a balcony. Sorry, the second floor will be extending over the first floor. the second floor will be extending over the first-floor porch. Because that's, the existing condition does not show, I mean, it shows the porch, but it does not show the second floor extending out over the porch, whereas the proposed condition shows that the second floor is extending out over the porch. And that is definitely not consistent, I think, if I'm reading it correctly. At least, it's not clear from the dimensions. It doesn't seem to be consistent with the plans.
Okay, we will check into that and clarify that in the cover letter.
But the architect is present, so maybe he can.
Yeah.
So, I saw that too and got confused, and then it seemed like it wasn't happening. Because the section.
Did you mute him because he was?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, apologies. You're muted, unmuted now.
Yes, hello, yes. Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, so you have this rendering that you did of existing and proposed condition, the rendering that was submitted on April 20th. Looks like you're pulling the third floor forward of the existing second floor and creating this kind of enclosed porch. Is that what you're doing?
Hmm, no, it's, which one, oh, I think it's a dormer. Oh, it's like, it's a dormer. That's sort of, that's sort of coming out to an open porch.
But you don't show an open porch on your, when you look at your first-floor plan, if you look at any of the drawings, this is the existing. Oh, sorry, I'm only in the, yeah, if you have existing, you don't have a porch that's very deep, it's only three feet deep, right?
Yeah.
And then you go to the second floor, which you're not proposing to change. It doesn't appear that your second floor. Sorry, you have a lot of people in your background. Can you? I'm having to move away from all those people talking. So it doesn't appear as though you have the second floor extending over the first floor, or you're not showing that on your first-floor drawings. Very confusing.
Okay, I will, I will take a look at it. I'll take a look at it.
Okay. Okay, I'm muting you again because you have a lot of background noise. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Foladere.
Um, where were we picking? Okay. What else? The CCD1 we just gave because it was a question in the notice of comments about flood compliance. That was, that was the only reason, but it is a built home. There was a question about.
Sorry, sorry, stop. The CCD1, though, wasn't approved, not approved, nothing, so it doesn't really show anything.
It was, yeah, it was in response to a question about how we're dealing with flood compliance, but I understand that it wasn't approved. But that's why it was provided.
Tell us whether you complied or you didn't comply.
Yeah. The attic plan, there was a question about, I believe?
Yes.
From Commissioner Chanda?
Yes, and I think this goes back to the entirety of the plan. It's not very clear what is existing and what is proposed, so, and I understand the attic is completely new, but what is not clear from the attic is what portion of the attic is being counted towards floor area. So usually, typically in attic floor plans, you know, you should do a hatching indicating the area below five feet and the area above five feet.
Oh, yeah.
So if you could do that.
Okay, not a problem. Did I miss anything else?
And I think I do want to see the existing floor area.
Yeah.
Especially for the first and the second floor, and then the proposed, because it's very difficult to read the plans and determine where the changes are happening on the second floor.
Mm-hmm, noted. Alex, I don't know if he's muted, but.
Well, he's muted. I'm gonna unmute him.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make the existing and the proposed a little bit more clearer.
Okay, so the, so the issue is, we're supposed to be understanding very clearly what you're proposing to add, right? Because your drawings seem like no work, but in fact, you're doing work, so you shouldn't say no work.
I mean, ju, just for clarity's sake, we're just adding that attic floor. The drawings will represent it better, but just for today's conversation, we're just adding that third floor. Nothing else is, nothing, there's no other work happening in the building except for that third floor and the stair going, going to it from the second to the third.
But then that leads to the question is, why is there a change in the floor area for the second floor? Because as per your statement, the existing second floor has 1,095 square feet of floor area. And based on your calculation, the revised proposed second floor will be 1,236 square feet. So there's an increase in floor area that is being done through filling something, but it's not very clear how that additional floor area is being arrived at.
Okay, I, I will, I will take a look at that, but my first assumption was that because we are no longer utilizing, originally that, we approved that building utilizing the attic allowance, and now that attic, we no longer need attic allowance because of the BSA variance, so we're shifting, we're counting that as regular floor area.
What?
I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I don't understand.
So originally, in this zone.
So let's stick to the second floor. Let's just stick to the second floor.
So the second floor, right.
Based on your.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so. Don't interrupt her. Let her speak.
So based on the statement, the second floor area currently has 1,095 square feet. The proposed enlargement, there will be some enlargement on the second floor, and that will result in an increase in floor area on the second floor of 1,236 square feet. It's not clear from the drawing where that increase is happening.
Un, understood. That, and there's no construction in, in real life on that second floor. How, how the increase in floor area is being converted from bonus that we use for the attic allowance, the 20% bonus we use for the attic allowance, that's being converted to regular floor area because we don't need the attic allowance anymore because of this BSA variance.
What you said doesn't make any sense. Either it's floor area or it's not floor area, right? Whether or not there's an allowance is immaterial. There's an allowance that says it's just, you're allowed to add another 20% of floor area when it's in an attic. So what's the math? How many square feet is that extra floor area, right? So that, that's, so it's not like you're converting anything. It's simply, there's a number that represents the floor area of the second floor. What is it?
But, okay, we'll make, we'll make it more clear.
Okay.
Alex, I'm not sure, but was there an area in the existing home that was like open to below that is now being filled in?
There, there was a small open to below area for the staircase, yes. That was, that was, that was, that was deducted originally.
Because that was maybe part of the increase, but we have to get.
Yeah, I, I would, I would spot that a little bit more.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking you're not looking at your drawings. There's somewhere like on the street, and so you're trying to, my memory, and that's never good. So, so, okay, let's just take the questions, and Elise, make no other questions and speak to Mr. Lotovski.
Lotovski.
Lotovski, and, oh. Sorry, I misspelled your name. So I'll speak to him after and go.
I think it was.
Of course.
Anybody, anybody else, any other comment? I would like, and I'd like to invite people, members of the public, to speak on this application only. This is application number 2019-35BZ, 235 Beaumont Street, Brooklyn. Call in if you're interested in Beaumont Street, Brooklyn. Otherwise, please do not call. So for Beaumont Street, please call the number 646-558-8656, meeting ID 916-6766-1676. Okay, and just so we, how much time do you think we need to respond to these issues? Elise?
However much time Alex needs, but if he has to get the survey updated, I'm assuming a few weeks for the surveyor to update that and then him.
At least a few weeks.
What, what does a few weeks mean, be more specific?
A month, how much?
Uh, two, three weeks, two, three weeks to get this done.
All right, I'm gonna round it up to a nice four weeks. That's too simple. Okay, all right, thank you very much for calling in.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is 2019-196BZ, 41 East 20th Street, Manhattan. It's the Office of Eric Palatnick. It's a legalization for PCE.
I'm still here. Hi.
Let me raise, raise your hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you. Firstly, I want to say that I'm sorry if the statement was confusing. Again, I'm not sure if we were both reading this most up-to-date one, but we originally filed this as an extension of term, but then it was too expired and we had to file it as a new PCE, so that was the right observation or correct observation. So that is why maybe some of the language got confused. It is in a landmarked building, and we provided information about ADA compliance in the notice of comments, but I spoke with the architect earlier, and he said that he has no problem. We can go to the mayor's office and apply for the waiver, as Commissioner Chanda suggested.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a landmark building, so we were providing that letter because in other cases, we also had landmark buildings where it was technically infeasible to do certain things to the building because of the landmark. But we are gonna apply for the waiver, and hopefully that will solve that issue. I also wanted to state that the only reason this needs a PCE is because there's exactly one massage license person for the whole operation. It's actually mostly not a PCE. It's a health spa. They just have one massage license person, and that's why they have to apply for the PCE license. So, yeah.
That are called therapy rooms.
Yeah, so they do all kinds of health. I can expand on that, but they do different types of health services that I can, I don't want to try to describe because it's not my business, but I can ask the owner to describe more fully. But they, the actual massage therapy type of thing is one person, and I believe they have people in waiting rooms while other people are being used, but the majority of the operation is not massaged.
All right, anything else?
Um, what else? And then I will also speak to the owner about paying the fine.
Okay.
Um, and make sure that it's clear in the, clearer in the statement of facts that this is about 10 years old, expired, and we have to go for a new special permit because it expired too long ago.
Thank you very much. I think that's it. Any other questions? Okay, so we're gonna go to public. There is one person in the waiting room, but let's, well, recognize I don't want here for this application. This application, 2019-196BZ, 41 East 20th Street in Manhattan. You should be calling in only if you're interested in speaking on this application. Call in number 646-558-8656, and I, 916-766. So there is one person in the waiting room who's identified as Galaxy Note 8, who I'm going to admit and hope that that person is calling in about 41 East 20th Street. Okay. So Galaxy Note 8, when you can hear us, please state your name and confirm that you're calling about 41 East 20th Street in Manhattan. Galaxy Note 8, can you hear us? Oh, connecting to video, to audio. There we go. Please, you're, you're muted. You've muted yourself. Please state your name, Galaxy Note 8.
You're muted.
I'm muted. Some, everybody was muted, okay. Galaxy Note, state your name.
Azza Inawasra.
Um, are you, are you calling about 41 East 20th Street?
No.
What are you calling?
About 123th Street in, in Flushing.
Hang up, please. That's another case.
Too early. We're not up to the case, so please hang up and listen to the YouTube video and call in when we call that case, okay?
Okay, okay. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Um. Okay. Sorry, moved to waiting room. Hi. I'm gonna have to assume that these other people are calling about the later case. There's too many other people in the waiting room. Okay, I'm gonna move forward with this. So I would like to just thank Elise for calling in, and we'll set another date for submission. How much time do you think you need for this?
She's muted.
You didn't, I'm sorry.
Hi. Oh, I said, so the issue with this one is we have to get a letter from the mayor or a waiver from the mayor's office, and also this business unfortunately is figuring out how they want to move forward due to COVID. You know, because it is a very small operation and a PCE, and you noticed that before, that a lot of these businesses are struggling. So I think we need a little bit of time in this situation due to.
So what I want to say is, I don't want, since this is an existing use that's been going on for a long time, I don't want this letter from the mayor's office on disabilities to prevent this, this health spa from reopening. So the extent that we're in the way, I don't want to be, us to be in the way, right? So, so I, I really, maybe we put it on for a little bit sooner than later. Like the other things that you can add, respond to, why don't you respond to them? That way, we can find out just kind of your progress. For client, whether, when you get to, what is it, in phase four? Is that when they're allowed to open?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so find out if they're planning on opening in phase four. I mean, that's the, the question, and we'll put you on for sooner. So let's not talk about waiver from the mayor's office. Let's talk about the response to the other issues. How much time do you need for that?
I, I guess for that, it's just clarifying the statement of facts and clarifying the business operations with the one massage license up to date. So is there anything else that I'm missing?
No, I don't think so, right?
Yeah, so I don't need a lot of time. It's just the ADA is the biggest issue.
Okay, all right. Thank you, then. I'll go on to the next one. Thank you, Elise.
Okay, next item is 2019-267BZ, 16598 Basely Boulevard, Queens. This is also a PCE legalization.
I'm still here.
Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you. I, I spoke with the architect, and he, no problem, can add egress, show an elevator access and any type of ADA access needs for the whole building up to the PCE. That is not a big change for him. And then I also spoke to him about parking, as Commissioner Chanda noticed. This is kind of, this is a super block, and it's a C2 commercial overlay piece of a super block. So parking could be hundreds of spaces for a giant mall on a super block. It's one, like, massive zoning lot. So he wasn't sure about.
What to show, right? Maybe what you could do is just give us, um, a large, you know, an area map that you just get from your own area map and show the little dot that represents the PCE on the area map, just so that we understand the context.
Okay, and, um, as part of the notice of comments, the project manager did ask me to kind of try to highlight the C section, so that is, that section's in, I believe, red on the zoning map, I can re-point to that and do what you just asked. Um, and I thought that helped clarify it a little, but I'll resubmit that.
And, and maybe, you know, maybe the other thing, which of course we can all get by doing our own Zoom, um, is you could do a copy of a Zoom aerial that shows all the parking and then point, put a little dot where your facility is, so that we can see it's hundreds of parking spaces.
Yeah, it's, yeah, this is a massive mall. When I went to the community board, they talked about all the events in the mall even, because it's like the main mall in the area.
No, but that's kind of what I mean, so just, uh, an aerial view of the massive mall with all the parking and all of that, and there's somewhere in the middle of all that.
Okay, not a problem. Um, and then I would ask if it's possible to close this, because there's not too much to do, and submit for, um, a grant at the next hearing.
Okay, so this is, what we do need though, is, we're talking about the first and second floor plan indicating location of egress to the street and elevator access from the street, that's the, the main missing thing, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right then, um, I'd like to ask if there's any members of the public who would like to speak on this application, which is number 2019-267BZ, 165-98 Basely Boulevard in Queens. If you're interested in Basely Boulevard in Queens, please call in. And the phone number 646-558-8656, meeting ID number 916-6766-1676. Okay, let's just give it a couple of. So how much time do you think to get in the, um?
I think that we only need like a week to put everything together, I think this is, can be a quick turnaround.
Um, I don't know that we can accommodate one week, so we're gonna be.
Yeah.
Because this, uh, this uses, I'm to, that this is holding up from proceeding, or?
What did you just say? Sorry.
Question is, is this grant holding up the PCE from, if this is a legalization, legalization?
Yeah, this opened, um, in November of last year. But it's obviously been closed until page four.
All right then, so then I would like to, unless, uh, unless I have objections from the commissioner, I'd like to close this. Okay, uh, Madam Chair, Marjorie Promata?
Um, yes.
Sorry. Vice Chair Chanda?
Yes.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Okay, it's closed for decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
And this is submission on this, okay. So I, okay. Slow down, um, I, thank you very much, Elise, for calling in. So I just want to say, two hours that we're on this, and I'm suspecting from the, the call-ins that there may be, this may be long, um, and so I'm thinking maybe we want a five-minute break. Five minutes, is that good? Yes, every, yes, so a five-minute break and we'll be back and we see people in the waiting room, and I know there were a lot of people who, maybe a lot of people wanted to testify, so.
Uh, just say something, I'm sorry, um, I don't know if jealous on the, jealous on the thing?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay, because, um, Mr. Bonfilio wants to do a PowerPoint, but I told her she should email it to Kurt, maybe he can do it.
Yeah, you should email it to Kurt and Kurt will, okay, so, all right, so we're going to resume at 4:25, okay?
Okay.
Jello, you got the presentation?
Uh, yes, yes, the presentation was emailed, uh, to Kurt, myself, you, and, um, it's from the project architect.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
Oh, good, it has, it has a streetscape and everything, which is good.
Don't forget, we're, we're live.
Oh, sorry.
So Frank Quatella is the architect.
Oh, he is?
Frank Quatella?
Yes, he's the architect, but the applicant is Paul Bonfilio, he's the one who put together the application and.
No, so she can see the, if she sees the name.
I see Frank Quatella in, and Tracy also, I see Frank Quatella in the waiting room.
Yeah, Frank and Paul are together.
In the same, on the same call, you mean?
Yeah.
We don't have a quorum yet, though. Okay, I think we can start, we have our, we have a quorum anyway, Commissioner Shita, I don't know if you can hear us, but please join in if you can. Okay, we have a quorum, so.
Okay, so we're continuing with the BSA public hearing for June 16th, 2022 PM session. The final case that we're discussing is 2020-9BZ, 2611, 123rd Street, Queens. The applicant is Paul Bonfilio.
We have Frank Quatella here.
He's the architect.
If you can hear us, Mr. Quatella, please speak. He's not muted.
Six.
Mr. Quatella? He's away from his screen. Yeah, please text, uh, Mr. Bonfilio and ask him.
Just emailed him.
Okay.
Frank isn't, Frank isn't.
Okay, he's connecting to audio, he wasn't connected for some reason before. Mr. Quatella, if you can hear us, please speak and unmute yourself. Mr. Quatella? I don't know what's going on.
Is Paul with him, uh, Jello?
Yes, they're together, I'm on the phone with them, actually, they're having trouble with their audio.
There's somebody. Let us know if they're trying to dial in with a phone number, there's someone with the last three digits 600 and I don't know who that is. Yeah, um, Jello, when you speak to them, find out how they're calling in, because if it's not their name, I need to know what the phone number is.
Uh, they're not trying to call in, they've been, that's them, the three of them are on the screen. And they're trying to connect with their computer, I don't know who that phone number is.
Okay, so, 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 oh, somebody's there, I mean, this person, okay, so the person that we're seeing on the screen, Mr. Quatella, if you can hear us, please speak, and if you can't, one of you needs to call in with a phone. We can't hear you and you're not muted. They don't know it. Oh, somebody's on the phone, I see. Please, call in.
So Frank is, Frank has called and he needs to be admitted to the meeting.
But I don't know what he's calling.
What's your last, what's the last four digits of your phone number? 1600.
So he, now he's just admitted now.
Okay, you're admitted and you're muted.
Okay, so I'm unmuting 600. And there's also a phone number 919.
I need to be unmuted from my phone, that's me.
Who's me?
Good, I'm in, okay, I'm gonna keep it dialed in because my computer audio for some reason will not let me connect.
Please turn off your YouTube video, turn off your YouTube.
My YouTube's off.
We can't hear, uh.
Is, who, who is, who has last 919, is that one of you three people?
No, well, I'm 1600.
Okay, there's somebody in who has 919, um, that's not part of your team?
No, no.
Back into the waiting room, okay.
Bye.
Tony, you wanna do the honors?
Yeah. Okay, um, all right, so do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony? Before this board, wait, before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Okay, Paul, you can start, how are you, sir?
Okay, good.
Say your name.
Uh, this is Paul Bonfilio, I'm the applicant for the variance. Well, I thought I gave a substantial amount of information on this case. I don't know if you're aware that there are studies that had to do with the floor area ratios, the side yards, and, uh, FAR. Uh, anyway, in terms of the findings, uh, it states in the, in the A finding, uniqueness, one of the characteristics of uniqueness is a narrow lot. And this is a narrow lot, it's not a vacant lot, it's a lot that has a building on it that's been there for some time, and if you looked at the, uh, the, uh, sandborne maps, you would see that that building has been there for quite a number of years. So it's not a vacant lot, it's, uh, and as you know, that lot was cut in half, that through lot was cut in half back in 1966. And the building was still there, the building was there, it was enlarged at some point, I don't know when, and there is a survey for, for Commissioner Shita, there is a, uh, survey that shows, uh, the actual building. We have a, a. We have a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if there's some way we can show it to them.
They have it.
Yes, it's being played. I'm not sure. Are you watching? You know, you can watch this on YouTube, just turn off the sound.
We're good.
Yeah. Is there some way to...
They have it.
Oh, you have that already?
That's it, it's on.
Oh, I see.
Have it watched on the YouTube, on your computer, so you can follow along with us, but just don't have the sound on, okay? And Commissioner Ollie Brown has her hand up, so I'd like to recognize.
Okay.
So you just stated in clarification that you're, you're characterizing yourself as a narrow lot. But to me, that's problematic because 26 other lots are as narrow or narrower. So that, to me, doesn't seem to be that unique if one quarter of the lots actually has the same characteristic as you.
Well, isn't, but it's still not, it's still too narrow to develop. We need to have certain waivers in order to do anything worthwhile. You saw what the as of right looks like. It's a very narrow building that doesn't even have a legal as per code inside dimension. The dimension's less than eight feet. That's, that doesn't meet the code. So that's the reason we were looking for the side yard waivers, to make a decent sized house, which is 20 feet.
So I think, Mr. Bonfilio, I think you're misunderstanding how the waiver, how a variance application works. The first step of your variance application goes like this. I have a site that has a unique condition. Why is it a unique physical condition? You need to explain why it's unique. How is it unlike the majority of other lots in the neighborhood? And then, unique, how does the, how does the unique pose a hardship that prevents me from developing the lot in a way that is, makes, essentially renders it a viable, developable lot, in your case, because you're putting...
The lots that are in, that, the lots that are the same size or less, or, they were done in the 1920s. Those are preexisting conditions. Those houses go back to the 1920s and 30s that were built on those lots, which is why some of their, anyway, the 20-foot lots have to do with detached and semi-detached units that are there. The other lots have less than the required side yards. If you see that study done by Urban Cartographics that has to do with those lot sizes, you can see clearly which ones are narrow, which is a few of them. And the rest of them just don't have the correct side yard requirements.
So you need to be more systematic, okay? Let's try this again. You need to say, so first of all, let's talk about your lot. You have a lot of a certain dimension, and the lot has an existing use on it. It's being currently used for commercial purposes, and there's growing concern on it, right? So when you say, my lot is unique because it's narrow, and then it turns out there are 28 narrow lots. What is it about your lot that's different than those 28 other lots? We're not saying we know the answer yet, right? But one, one, one response that I might have is, and Commissioner Ollie Brown already had, is your lot has an existing commercial use on it, so maybe that makes it unique. But then, the next part of that question is, it needs to be a condition that poses a hardship. So what's your hardship? You have a commercial use on the lot, so where's the hardship? You're already making a viable use of the lot, and it's not...
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Right, so it's not vacant. So arguably, this lot is in a better position than other lots because you've got this commercial use that makes money, arguably.
Commercial use is not permitted in R4A zone.
No, no, it is permitted. You've got an existing, arguably non-conforming condition that has been going on for decades and decades, it looks like. So you're in an unusual position. You have a non-conforming commercial use that actually makes money as opposed to a vacant lot where you can't use it for anything except for a 10-foot wide shed.
Yeah, but the lot, the, the, it's, there have been times when this property was vacant, and when it's vacant for a number of years, it has to revert to the current zoning. Unoccupied, I should say. When it's unoccupied for two years or more, it has to revert to the current zoning, which is R4A.
But that's not your condition right now. It's occupied right now. So is this premature? Maybe you need to go to a time when finally you do abandon the use, if that's what happens.
Well, that use is, is going to be abandoned because the client wants to do something that's legal in an R4A zone.
Ah, but that's a different question. So the, the client then abandons a viable use and then says, now what do I do because I'm not allowed to do anything? So the next, another part of the variance is, is it self-created? Is your hardship complained of self-created? So there are a few issues that were raised here, right? Post 1961, this through lot was subdivided into two parts. And the through lot, it had the ability to be used in, or however it was, other ways. So the question is, did the subdivision of the lot create the hardship complained of? And then, the next question would be, does the abandonment of this non-conforming use, which is really like a great opportunity, does the abandonment of that non-conforming use, that willful abandonment constitute a self-created hardship? I'm gonna recognize there's two other commissioners with their hands up. Commissioner Shonda first, and Commissioner Shabeta next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The question I have, and that may help me understand, is that, because I noticed through your history, you have had the commercial, you've had non-residential uses, let's say, non-residential and non-commercial community facility uses operating on the site, but none of them were operating for a long duration. They were mostly operating for a short period of time. And I would like to understand why that is the reason. And is that because the site is not big enough to accommodate a reasonable commercial use? And, and therefore, you're, you're renting it, you, the owner is renting it out on a short-term basis just to be able to keep the current commercial use viable? And, and, and is not, therefore, you know, has these chunks of vacancy, or, or, not vacancy, unused in between while looking for tenant? And I think that will also help me understand, is the level of operation, the continuity of commercial use that is happening on the site? And, and are you able to optimize the, the non-conforming use status on your site? And if you're not, why is it? Is it because your site is not big enough to allow for a reasonable non-conforming use that a typical commercial space would need? And, and therefore, you're kind of constantly dealing with these turnkey, short-term commercial tenancy? And therefore, you want to resort to a more viable operation, which is an as-of-right use?
Chuck, you want to answer that?
I, I will answer. Hi, Commissioners, good afternoon. It's Frank Quatella. In, in response to your questions or inquiries, the, the, the current situation of the building that's on the lot is, is sort of a shed. It's very, very difficult to find a viable tenant there. It's, it's partially made out of wood. It's not the, the most sizable place that would house any business that would, that would, you know, expect growth or be accommodating to their clients or customers. That, that has led to the sort of transient tendencies that we've been experiencing over the, over the past few years. And now, we're, we're sort of subject to anyone that's able to take the space or willing to take the space for a reasonable rent without, a very, very short-term lease, if any lease at all. And, and not to mention, it's, it's very difficult to get utilities to come into the building, plumbing, sewer, electric, and so on because it's, it's, it's a shed that was converted over the course of years to a rentable building. So it, it's, by definition, is it a building? It's really not. It's, it was an accessory use to some other building on the lot, and it just sort of transformed or evolved into this. So I do agree with you that it has had chunks of vacancy during the year, but as far as the viability goes, it's extremely difficult, especially in College Point with all the new development going on and a lot larger warehouses and commercial properties available that people are sort of bargaining for and competing for. This one is sort of at the bottom of the barrel. It, it doesn't seem to be making any profit for the owner. This is the reason why we're, we pursue the variance. And this is the reason why we've expected to not continue the commercial use with the inability to increase it besides going through a variance. And we've decided to go with the residential use, which is, in my opinion, and Paul's opinion, and the owner's opinion, more in line with what the neighborhood needs, more in line with what the neighborhood would respect as far as the development goes. And it is along the lines of many of the other buildings in our radius maps that have, that have been indicated on the, on the submission. So the buildings are quite narrow. A lot of them are semi-detached with easement driveways or non-compliant side yard conditions. But it doesn't seem they are more adapted to, or adapted to more modern living styles or living situations as people would build houses nowadays. And that's why we went for the side yards. And that's why we, we've opted to go for a 20-foot wide building, not extremely deep. It's a two-family, three-story, plenty of parking and so on. It seems to be easier to rent. I guess, obviously, money is an issue. We could definitely rent it out to, to whoever might be available to, to come in and live in College Point. But a commercial has not been working, or manufacturing or an industry has been working.
I, I think part of the problem, and I recognize Commissioner Ollie Brown in a second, part of the, the problem, Commissioner Shabeta had his hands up before, and then he took them down, so I don't know what's going on with that. Hold on one second. I just want to say that you need to be more precise in your thinking. What you're doing is you're blending all of your arguments that the owner wants this thing into one big blob. And we don't work by blobs. Each finding has to be made. And so finding number one is, at the 20-foot wide width, is the site unique? Tell us, how unique is the site? You don't have to do it right now, but you have to think about it very carefully. Look at the other sites in the neighborhood, the sites that are in what we'd say is the study area of 1,000 feet. What other sites are like your site? In what way is your site not like those sites? And then you're going, don't answer. Then, and then you're going to need to address this fact of this use that's currently going on, that's been going on for decades. And you're going to have to say, yes, my site is unique in that it's commercial. But what about that unique commercial use makes it no longer somehow or other viable? And makes it in some kind of a disadvantage somehow that needs relief from us? Our job is to give relief when you have a non-viable site. So that, that's kind of step one, right? And then, the part of it that's quite difficult in your case is that it can't be that you're looking to abandon sort of benefits, which were the through lot when it was a much bigger site? The commercial use when it was making money as a commercial use? You can't be abandoning those benefits in favor of this application because that's called a self-created hardship. And then the next part of it is the scope of the waivers. The scope of the waivers are limited to what is the problem with the site? If the site is too narrow to provide side yards, that's the typical waiver. And especially where you could have had more floor area as of right, had you not subdivided the lot in the 19...
Oh, no.
Floor area as of right.
The client did not subdivide this lot?
It doesn't matter. No, no, it doesn't work like that. It's anything subsequent, it's predecessor's entitlement. So anything from 1961, at the time that the zoning resolution was created, moving forward, that was done by a predecessor entitlement is self-creating the hardship complained of. And we don't grant variances for the self-created hardship. So there are ways to say that, no matter what we did in the 1960s, we still would have been stuck with the same side yard regulation, for example. But you wouldn't have been stuck with the same floor area, or the same rear yard requirements, or the same front yard setback requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So if you need more help with this, we can give you examples of an application that are, that kind of go through these findings clearly, because right now, guys are like all over the place. But I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Shabeta first, and then Commissioner Ollie Brown.
That's, I, I wanted to give a simple instruction, but only add that... Are you guys hearing me? I have some feedback in the background.
There is feedback, but...
The only other instruction is, if you're going to make a, a non-viability argument, that you're gonna need a lot more than, than that blanket type of statement. And be prepared to have a very ample submission as to why this is not viable.
Okay.
Okay, and Commissioner Ollie Brown?
I'd say that you would, in order to have that argument of being non-viable be convincing, you probably would have to base it on being obsolescent. So that whatever you have there that's generating commercial income, it's an obsolete building form or, you know, building structure, structure form, that is working for that type of industry. That's a heavy lift, but that's the way you would have to go with that. Other than that, I don't, I don't see any uniqueness that isn't self-created at this point.
Okay, did you see the 1,000, the 1,000-foot diameter uniqueness study? Have you seen that in the application?
I, so, go ahead. I'm sorry, Commissioner Ollie Brown, go ahead.
I saw your 400-foot radius study, and within 400 feet, you have 86 lots. 24 of those lots have width of 20 feet or less. That's 27% of the lots that are as narrow or narrower than your lot. So that's not a basis for a uniqueness finding. So you're gonna have to find another way in which to distinguish your...
No, there was a separate study that was done, 1,000-foot radius, that looked at...
If you can't make it in a 400-foot radius, there's no way you can make it in 1,000 feet.
Well, there, there were only three lots that were found. There were just slivers of lots. And, well, you'd have to look at that study there that was done. It's, it's part of the submission, anyway. It's that one I did.
I think, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And they weren't even in the R4A zone, by the way.
Right, but within 400 feet, there are 24 lots like you.
Well, you have to look at those lots that have semi-attached buildings on them.
But it's, it's a pre-existing, non-compliant...
They're pre-existing, non-compliant, anyway, all of those.
Right, but I don't know that you, what, what you have to do is put forth an argument to us that says, I am not like them. I suffer more. And you're gonna have to find that criteria that differentiates you from them. And I'm saying, right now, looking at the 400 feet, you said your criteria is, is narrowness. And I'm saying, looking within 400 feet, that's not a criteria. So you're gonna have to think about, well, what, in what other ways am I different from my surroundings? And whittle that number down of, of like, like lots.
Do you mean, in other words, that this lot has a commercial use on it, plus it's vacant in the sense that there's no residential development on it? That makes it different than those other lots. Those lots all have houses on it.
Right, but then you run the, the next question, which is, aren't you better off? You have a commercial use on that lot, and somebody's paying rent for that, and it's, and you're, they're in business, continuous business. So you're gonna have to answer that next question. Wait a minute, then how is this not a good thing? Well, our rent is month-to-month. Why is your rent month-to-month? Because this is such an undesirable piece of garbage of a structure on here that nobody ever put a commercial use in here. This is your last choice. This is, there's, you know, the people who can barely make it go, oh, look, there's, there's a lean-to over there. I can put my business in the lean-to because it's just like so cheap. You have to find a way to distinguish yourself in such a way that you are worse off than everybody around you. So that's your challenge, not mine.
Okay.
And Commissioner Shonda has her hand up now.
And, and just to...
And just to add to what Commissioner Otley-Brown said, I think, as she pointed out, there are other sites that are of 20 feet or less, and, but, I think what, and this is where you need to identify the uniqueness from your site to those, is that, are these 20-foot sites being used? Are they vacant? I don't think they are vacant. They're all being used. They're all being used for potential purposes. If they are being residential purposes, then how come those sites are viable and were able to build as of right, and your site is not? And the reason probably is because these were all pre-1961 building, and they did not have to meet all the zoning requirements that the current R4A requires, and you may have to, you would have to walk us through the argument of that, how if you were to build any R4A in any of these sites today, if they were vacant, would you be able to achieve what is there today on these sites?
No, you wouldn't. Right, okay.
So, I think those are the ways you have to kind of walk us through to show how this site suffers today. If this site, I mean, that is first going through the argument that you have an use that you're saying is of no value, or it's more, and therefore, if you meet the obsolescence argument, you're going to start with the site vacant, then the argument is, why is this site suffering so much compared to the other side? Why can't it be built compared to those other ones, which are also 20-foot wide? And I think you have to walk through, walk us through all the zoning requirements, parameters that apply to you today that doesn't apply to those sites, because they were pre-1961, and they were able to build, even the 1985 buildings. The zoning requirement was very different for the 1985 buildings. The last set of buildings that were built in these neighborhoods were in 1985. Those attached buildings, you cannot build attached buildings today, so, in this R4A zoning district. So, I think those are the arguments you have to kind of walk us through bit by bit, and indicate why you're needing all this set of variance waivers.
Carlo, is that you trying to raise your hand?
Yes, I just wanted to add something to Vice Chair's comment, just if it's helpful. I think also to distinguish those properties that were built after 1961, because you're currently in a contextual zoning in the R4A, and that probably came to fruition maybe within the last 15 years.
Yeah, I have that. That's all been documented, when those zoning changes occurred. It started out as R4, went to R41, and then R4A. It's in my presentation. It's in my material I sent.
Right, you're right. It is there, and that's where I got that information from, but you need to tie that into your argument as to why these sites were, if, can these sites be built today under the current regulation to what they're built to?
No, they can't.
Right, so that's, the point is, again, you need to do this argument very linearly, linearly, and the zoning is not the hardship complained of. The narrowness of the site, for example, is the hardship complained of, but you can only complain about it is if it's a unique condition. And so, first, you'll have to establish that uniqueness, okay? And very importantly, and this is a lot trickier, because it doesn't sound like you have experience with this, but the fact that the site was subdivided means that some of the hardship complained of was self-created. So, the only way that you can get around such a thing is to say that the through lot would have still had the same side yard requirement, no matter what. So, the side yard requirements are an issue, right?
Right.
Kind of a lot we had, we had side yard requirements, but you're not going to get through the floor area waiver, or the, I think it's a heightened setback waiver, because you would not have had that kind of issue on a through lot. You could have pulled the building back away from the street and put it closer to the center of the lot, and you certainly had to have more floor areas. So, I, my first reaction is, you're going to need to get rid of those other requested waivers and stick with the side yard, otherwise the other waivers will be viewed as self-created hardships.
And in R4 zone, the side yards would have been worse for a detached building, actually. We would have five and eight, as opposed to 12, which, 13 as opposed to 12. So, in an R4, it would have been far worse by one more foot, as far as side yards go. In an R4A, we're required two, two feet minimum, eight feet on the other side. I guess that would be designed to provide parking. So, R4 would have been worse. We would have had rear yard equivalents, either two front yards of 30 feet, or 60 feet in between two buildings, if you decided to go with two buildings. So, the building would have been smaller if we would have been in an R4A as well. The only difference would have been side yards and front yard, parking in a front yard. Those kind of things would be thrown in the mix. So, we, I could show you the study on how an R4 would have been worse, as, or it remained as a through lot. So, I understand your point, but we'll provide all those additional aspects of the zoning.
You know, this is, in 1966, this through lot was subdivided into an L-shaped lot, and then the other pieces left over.
Still after 61, so yeah.
It's after 61, I know.
So, I just want to say that you're in an R4A today, right?
Right.
It's not really relevant what you could have done if you were in an R4. I think, you're mixing, you've got to try to be really specific about each argument you make. Commissioner Shonda's talking about is the development in the community of the other buildings and what made that possible. They're probably all pre-61 buildings, where they didn't have these kind of side yard requirements at all, right? And so, it does, so at any time, whether it's today or before, those buildings could not have been developed. We don't want to see a study about what you could have done back in the day. We want to see a study about what you can do today, and what you could have done today had you not subdivided that lot in 1963, or whatever year it was, right?
But the owner didn't own that property. Never owned it. Okay.
Didn't hear us the first time. A self-created hardship is created also by a predecessor entitled, a predecessor entitled dating back to December 1961. If the predecessor subdivided the lot and then sold it off, and someone else comes and says, oh, now I have a terrible lot. I should get a variance, that is sort of creating these bizarre conditions so that you get a variance. And so, that's not something that we do, okay? But there have been variances granted with odd lots that were subdivided from other odd lots, where whether they were together as one or subdivided, they still experienced the same hardship. That's the argument you're going to have to make. And by the way, we have examples of those, and so I think that your project manager, Jelaprenka, can give you some examples of cases where that was a situation, where it was two really weird shapes that got subdivided, and the argument was, it's still, as a subdivided lot, suffering a hardship. But you're not going, I can tell you in advance, you're not going to qualify for the floor area waiver, because you gave up the floor area by subdividing the lot, and I'd say you probably also gave up the front yard setback waiver, because you could have pulled the building wherever it needs to be, according to the front yard regulations, et cetera. So, you're going to be sticking with the side.
I could just jump in on the front yard issue, since it's contextual. We're supposed to align, we're supposed to align with an adjoining building. The building that's next to us, that's adjacent, the residential building that's on the corner of 26th and 123rd is actually on the street line. We can't align with him, or that building, because it doesn't meet the context, and it's the building that's adjacent on the other side is a manufacturing district, but doesn't have a front yard requirement. So, we've provided a front yard or a setback in order to give us parking and honor the street widening that's there as well. So, we could address that as well in the re-presentation, or I guess the new documents that we submitted.
So, don't forget, I mean, it's too bad, but a variance isn't necessarily created to build a building that you think looks better in the neighborhood. A variance is created to give you a waiver from the regulations that you cannot comply with. If you can comply with them, you need to comply with them, because why, you know, what's the reason for the waiver? The waivers are granted because you have a hardship. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Otley-Brown, who has her hand up. Now, you're muted. Unmute yourself.
I'd say that dwelling unit, which I believe is based on floor area, right, is also a waiver that you could not be able to claim.
You mean the two...
Density.
The density, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Correct. Which you could have had, had you maintained your through lot that you subdivided back in the day.
We didn't, we didn't subdivide.
Predecessor.
Get off of that mantra, because your predecessor entitled subdivided.
But three other owners before this one.
You're called predecessor entitled. Commissioner Ramchetta?
I just want to mention that regarding the survey, I didn't see it in the first place, because it was in an avoided, it was in a voided folder, so I looked at the folder that's called Void, and I found it, and I'm asking the project manager to move it out of that.
Okay, yeah.
It was actually part of group of plans. It was page one of set of plans. I believe it was the as-of-right one, and it was a little part of that, but later on, it got voided, and that's why I didn't see it.
Yeah, it shouldn't have been voided. It was when the new plans were sent, there's some corrections that were done, but that was always there.
It sounds like.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners or the applicants?
What else do we want to do? I have a question. As of right, what the conforming use is now, can I make it more applicable for me at future basis to rent it to these kind of tenants, since it's as-of-right use right now? Can I make this site, even though it's in a R4A zone?
Say that again?
It's, I am using as-of-conforming use as the way it's being used now. You're saying that I'm making my monthly rent, and can I make this piece of property better than, because as the one lady said, it was a piece of garbage, she has every call, but can I make my property to more conform, more appealing to tenants in a future reference, future basis? Can I make it better than what it is, like, since it's of a form of...
You have to go for a variance.
You guys are saying to me, I'm renting it as of now. One of you said it was a piece of garbage. The lady said it. She did say, she did say to me it was a piece of garbage. My other question was, can I make this property more appealing to my, for my future tenants? That's what I'm saying. If I choose to leave it the way it is, can I make it more appealing?
Still variance.
Don't we have to go for a variance?
I'm still in a R4A. That's what I'm trying to say. You follow what I'm saying? Like, again, I want to know your opinion on that.
First, the first thing I want to clarify is, one of your groups said, the structure is this substandard structure, and nobody wants to rent it, because it's basically a lean-to that got turned into sort of a building that's not really a building. And so, one of the commissioners picked up on your comment and was trying to help with your argument, that perhaps, your argument is, that because the structure is substandard, and it's not viable as a commercial use, maybe you could make the argument that the commercial use is no longer, is now obsolete in terms of the world of commercial uses, and maybe that's how you would go to argue residential. So, the commissioner was actually responding to your statement.
That's how we're arguing with residential, but...
But then the next part of it is, now what I hear you asking is, could we...
This is the owner. What he wants to know is, can he improve the building as it is now? Improve it, or does he have to go for a variance?
That's my question.
Until we know what it is that you're talking about, you've got a non-conforming site, an existing, as far as I can tell, legal, non-conforming use on the site. What, the extent of, to which you're allowed to improve that non-conforming use has to do with the zoning regulations, and you have your architects there, who should be checking what the zoning regulations say, and what is permitted under zoning to occur with an existing non-conforming, legal, non-conforming use, right? Commissioner Otley-Brown?
That's what I was going to say, was that, first, check the zoning resolution and see what is applicable to you in terms of ways in which you might be able to reconstitute your use, or make it better, and if there is nothing that applies, that could be part of your argument.
Right.
What do we say?
Because I would like to keep tenants as is for long periods of time, but sometimes there is issues there because of the way the structure is. You know, I would like to make it more appealing for my tenants, so I don't have the spur of the emptiness and people changing all that stuff.
Yeah, we're not able to, we're not able to enlarge the building, we're not able to modify the building in any means structurally. The only thing we can do is cosmetic. So, I did 54313 in the zoning resolution. No structural modifications is permitted, or would be permitted to a non-conforming use. So, he's pretty much stuck with what he's got, and that's part of our sort of reason why we came in.
And if you had to make a new building?
But we're going to have to put some more facts together and resubmit, but that's fine. It's understandable.
And if you had to get a new building, you have to get a variance.
Yeah, any new building would be a variance. Well, actually, even a modification of the existing building would be a variance, and if we wanted to do a new building, manufacturing, industrial, commercial, it would be the same. It would be the same way. We have to resubmit everything back to the board.
Yes, and also, our executive director had something. He had his hand up. You want to say something, Carlo?
No, I just, actually, I was going to say what the architect said about the prohibitions in Article 5. So, my only suggestion was, instead of playing this out here, obviously, this is a discussion for them and the OB, but it sounds like the architect already was aware.
Right, so, you need this in the statement, and it helps make your argument, because right now, as I said, you're all over the place, and you need to really put together your argument in a cohesive way, okay? So, I'm going to, now, we have a few people in the waiting room, and so, one at a time, I'm going to admit each one and state their name, and hope that they're calling about this application. So, I see someone whose name is Kathleen Giorgio. I'm admitting her into the wait in our hearing, but we're not admitting everyone. We're going to do one at a time. So, Kathleen Giorgio, when you can hear, unmute yourself and state your name.
Can you hear me?
Yes, unmute off your YouTube video, please.
Excuse me?
Because we have feedback.
Okay.
So, I'm going to, now, we have a few people in the waiting room.
Am I off the YouTube?
Yes.
Okay.
And state their name, and hope that they're calling about this application. So, I see someone whose name is Kathleen Giorgio. I'm admitting her.
Please.
Into the wait in our hearing, but we're not admitting everyone. We're going to do one at a time.
Ms. Giorgio, are you, do you have speakers on, and you're watching YouTube, because we're hearing the...
Oh, okay, hang on.
Thank you, Ms. Giorgio.
Uh, hold on, one second, one second. Hold on.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Okay, okay.
So, I'm going to, now, we have a few people in the waiting room.
Am I off the YouTube?
No.
And state their name, and hope that they're calling about this application. So, I see someone whose name is Kathleen Giorgio. I'm admitting her.
Wait a minute.
Waiting in our hearing.
Okay, am I in now?
You're good, Ms. Giorgio.
Okay, thank you.
State your name, and also to confirm that you're calling about, sorry, which the application number.
I have the number. I have it, yeah. So, my name is Kathleen Giorgio. I'm the, I'm calling in about 2020-9-BZ.
Right.
I am the owner of the building to the south of this, this, this application, and it's S&amp;S Propeller Company. And I have, my building was not built on the property line. I have a two and a half, two and a quarter on the front end, and two and a half on the back end, going into this property. And they want to go from property line to property line, and I just feel that that is not, not feasible or to... or, um, to my benefit, because it is a manufacturing slash, uh, commercial property. So I have fifty employees that are coming in, uh, Monday to Friday. So I would like more of a buffer in between my property and the proposed building. That's number one, and number two, the parking, because as one of the people on the, on the board had stated, the parking is a horror, it's just a horror, because you have, most of that block is all commercial. And him building a commercial property would probably be in more conformity to all the other buildings on the block. And you have to remember, it's a very small width block, it goes up on an incline, you have tractor trailers coming up there, and then you have cars parked on the side from the, from the police academy, all the cadets, because they didn't have, they don't have parking for the cadets, so then they're all over the neighborhood trying to park, and it's just, uh, 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 it's like a nightmare. So all these things taken into consideration, that's what I would like. I mean, if they are going to be able to build something, it, to me, being, having a bigger, bigger, uh, larger buffer, so maybe they could go to eighteen feet, and then to waive, you know, them not having so many electrical boxes, just two, so it can't go past a two-family, um, and then set it back a little, because on, on my north side of my building, I have windows, and their building would be blocking my windows and my natural light and my natural ventilation, because, because it is a commercial property, I do have to have the proper ventilation for the machine shop. And I have, I have big holding, uh, bins that hold all this, um, these, it's a collector. So, all this taken into respect, I think, you know, to, to grant them a variance, or, I, I was trying to pay attention, but those are my main concerns, them going from property line to property line, them blocking my natural light, the, the building they're proposing is twenty feet, seven feet high, which is to me ludicrous. And he'd be overshadowing the, the houses to their, to their left, if you're looking at the property, and my property on the right. And, um, I don't know, that's, that's the way I feel.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it, I, I just have one question, um, because I don't see the addresses here. You're, are you on a hundred twenty-third street?
Yes, twenty-six dash fifteen, one twenty-third street.
Do you know, you know whether you're, you know whether your lot seventeen? Not necessarily, okay.
No, my lot goes all the way, all the way back. My, my lot goes two hun- three hundred feet, uh, long, I think, two or two fifty.
So you go to?
When they subdivided their lot, their lot went the whole length of my building. So then they cut it off, I don't know for what reason, and, um, so my lot goes all the way back. And again, I, 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 we provide all the ferries with their propellers, the US, the US Navy, the US Coast Guard, and if I, if, if my buil- business was interrupted for any reason because of this construction or them being right on top of me, it would be non-bet official, we do homeland security, you know, we do all that for the, all the vessels in New York and Maryland and Virginia. And I also have, I'm actually talking to you from a, from my location down in Florida where we do the same thing. So, and we have all heavy-duty equipment, you know, but we, so, that was, that's my concern.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony. Okay, um, now I'm gonna let in someone whose name is Galaxy Note Eight, I think he actually had dialed in before. He's muted. I don't even see him.
Yeah, he's down at the bottom.
Here we go, okay. He's muted himself, Galaxy Note Eight, when you can hear us, please state your name. Can you hear us? I don't know who that is, and I, oh, wait, maybe in this side. Galaxy Note Eight, can you hear us? If so, please unmute yourself and state your name. Galaxy Note Eight, if you can hear us, please state your name and unmute yourself. I can't get any response, I'm gonna move on. Oh, hello?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, please state your name.
Sure, Azza Onomasra.
And you, and all that, please?
My name is Azza Onomasra.
Spell it, please.
A-Z-Z-A, last name is E-L-N-A-W-A-S-R-A.
E-W-A-F, uh, something like that? I made a mistake, made a mess, I think, but something like, okay, go ahead, please. Please state your name, and, and you have three minutes to speak.
Uh, my name is Azza Onomasra, I'm calling about my property on one twenty-third street and twenty-sixth avenue in Flushing. I'm calling about the proposed two-family home, uh, right behind my, um, right behind my backyard. It was originally, uh, supposed to be a, a, a parking garage or a little mechanic shop, but now they're proposing a two-family house.
Yes.
Which if that's built, it's basically gonna close any view or anything through my backyard, and at the same time is gonna take up all the parking spaces in my, on my, on my block.
Wait, so, um, it's going to close up your, how is it closing up your backyard?
I mean, um, they put up, they put up a, a twelve-foot fence, uh, about six months ago, and now they want to take off the fence, or they want to turn that little parking garage slash mechanic shop into a two-story family house.
Okay. Mm-hmm, okay, okay. Anything else you want to say?
Uh, no, basically, could they do that, because?
Your, your house is, is, is which one of the three? There are three houses to the north of that property.
Yes, my house is, uh, one-two-three-oh-six, twenty-sixth Avenue.
We don't have addresses on these, so I don't know, we only have lot numbers.
Yeah.
I think it's lot number twenty-two.
Yes, I'm the second house.
The one with the swimming pool in it?
No, I don't have a.
Um, okay, so, so the question is, they're asking us whether they can do what they want to do, and that's, uh, what you're calling about, and so you should be following this hearing. And, um, I believe you showed the drawings before, but you seem to know what the project is. Follow along with the hearing, and we're going to be pushing back on some of their requests, and we may even have a different approach entirely for their project, so, uh, stay tuned, okay? Uh, we do appreciate you calling in, okay?
Yeah, because that can lower, uh, my house's value, correct?
I, I can't comment on that, I don't know the answer to that. All right, thank you very much for calling in, and please, uh, do, continue to watch the hearing, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, I'm going to now admit someone who's dialed in as Rex, two different times, R-E-X. Um, I don't know if they're the same person, I assume they are. And so, the person who's titled Rex, please state your name when you can hear us. Okay, the person named Rex, please state your name.
Yes, good, good afternoon.
Hi.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, state your name, please.
Okay, I'm getting some feedback, hold on, let me see if I can turn this.
Turn off your YouTube video, and you also have two different, um, call-ins, so hang up.
One was a, one was a mistake, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so hang up on one of them.
Okay. Join, let me close that, how's that, any better?
Better, thank you.
Hi, my name is Rex Carner, I'm, I work with Kat Giorgio as a building consultant. I'm a, a registered filing rep, a general contractor and property manager for the last forty years. Kat asked me to take a look at this, uh, BSA, uh, application, and there's a couple of notes that Kat had already said, but I'll just go over it again. The lot was subdivided as per your review in sixty-six, her lot's actually to the south, lot seventeen, and it's two hundred feet deep, actually a hundred ninety-four feet deep. She's an existing long-term business in College Point. On the north side, she has legal lot line windows, they're technically not on the lot line, they're about two foot off, or some, in some places, they're a little closer, and they provide light and ventilation for her existing machine shop. They do, uh, unique kind of business, they make and refurbish large-scale propellers for all kinds of ships, as you have already heard. We don't really have an objection to, uh, a complying residential use, but we want the board to consider minimum variance, uh, there's two eight, there's two side yards, an eight and two. Uh, if there was an offset of two feet on his property, he'd get an eighteen-foot house. Um, he wants a three-story building, he calls it a basement of two stories, it's a three-story building. Uh, he's limited by the FAR, and we'd like him to stay within the limits of the FAR and not get a, a variance for that. And he has a density issue, and he wants to have a second family, so, the area gets converted all the time to three-family houses after these are, this is not a tenant that's going to be living there, he's going to utilize the space as an, as a landlord, and that's fine. But, um, since the board is, has the ability to give relief, we'd like relief as well, and a PLP meter, uh, could be avoided in, in the, in the corpus of the, uh, of the grant, so he has one, one tenant paying the outdoor lights, and the other one is paying for the second apartment, and that way, limiting a possible conversion. Uh, and aside from that, we're concerned about building adjacent to Kat's property, uh, that's lot seventeen, I'm sorry, I called her Kat, because, you know, we need to protect her foundation, she can't be shut down for a day. So if they crack a foundation, they have water problems, or any kind of, uh, issue there, that would be a problem. So we'd like to see some setback or offset off the property line. Uh, so, basically, our points are, um, a residential conforming use in the R4A, fine. Uh, side yard, one side yard, uh, waived but not two, a height limit of two stories, the FAR limit as per the cuts, the cut-down lot, the density limit, which is one of the issues with the FAR. And we would like him to consider providing parking, he had, he had proposed parking front to back, that means one tenant needs to move out a car while, when they want to go and use it. Instead of that, he's got twenty feet, maybe he can provide two eight-foot, uh, parking lots in the front yard, and instead of a ten-foot front yard, pushing it back to twenty or twenty-one feet and having a, a walkway in the middle. I don't want to redesign this building, but parking's really an issue, and, uh, parking in the garage and then having to move a car out and then put another car in, it's just a lot of backing up and stuff on a street that gets filled with tractor trailers, because it is essentially a manufacturing zone. Um, one, I think one and a half feet of the property is actually in the manufacturing zone, which he doesn't seem to address. But, those are our points, that's our, and, uh, I'm open for any questions.
Very carefully analyzed, we appreciate your testimony, um, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm going to mute you, no offense, just how we're doing it. Um, okay, so, uh, then I'm going to admit someone whose first, the last three digits are nine-one-nine, and unmute them, so.
Um, one, I think one and a half feet of the property is actually in the manufacturing zone.
So, um, please turn off your YouTube.
Those are our points, that's all.
Please turn off your YouTube video, and, um, because we're getting terrible feedback and we can't hear anything you say, and then we will unmute you. Nine-one-nine, please state your name when you can hear us.
Nine? Ten?
Okay, Kat, can you hear me?
Yes, to state your name, please.
Michael Townsend.
Okay. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, so, when I did my cursory research on R4A, the variance or the waivers that the property owner's looking for are multitude. The minimum lot width is supposed to be thirty feet, it's only twenty feet. There's no side yards, you're looking to build to the property line, the lot size is cut in a third, it's supposed to be twenty-eight-fifty, it's going down to like nineteen-hundred. So all of a sudden, they're losing thirty percent of their minimum lot in terms of ma- size as well as minimum lot width. The idea of the parking is also tremendously difficult in regards to this community.
Okay.
And additionally, um, I, I've, I've been in this area for thirty-five years, it has always been a commercial property. I remember one of the upholstery shop, I remember when everybody used to be in there. The idea that now it could be converted to a three-family home with no parking potentially, that's going to be on the street. Even his tenant now leaves cars all over the street that he's working on. So I have concerns about the quality of life in the community in regards to, if he wants, the idea of having a waiver doesn't mean that all the rules disappear. It's buyer beware, he bought the property, it's not my responsibility that he doesn't build what he wants to build. There are rules that are put in there by the building department, and you have to conform to those.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, appreciate your testimony. Um, and, uh, continue to listen to the hearing and.
Oh, I've been on it for the last four hours, I know.
Now, not just today, we really appreciate you calling, um, but there'll be a continued hearing at a future time, so, um, continue to.
Will we get notification via the mail?
No. Um, you, you will not via mail, but what we will do is, either Friday or Monday, we will be posting information on when the continuation is on our website, so you'll be able to.
So I go to the BSA website to look it up, I guess, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very much, I'm gonna mute you, but you're still inside of our Zoom, and I'm muting you, no offense, that's just how we have.
No problem.
Thank you. All right, and then I think it's the last caller in, last three digits, three-five-eight, I'm admitting you, but please turn off your YouTube video before we unmute you. Okay, uh, last three digits, three-five-eight, please, um, turn off your YouTube video.
All right, and then I think it's the last caller in, last three digits, three-five-eight, I'm admitting you, but please.
Please turn off your YouTube, or turn the volume off.
Uh, I want to thank the commissioners of the board of standards appeals, this is Michael Niebauer, I'm the interim president of the College Point Civic and Taxpayers Association. I want to thank you for, uh, been on, uh, for four hours. Uh, and all I can say is, maybe the commissioners can do a, a, a tour of the SNS Propeller and see, uh, the facility itself, how things have transformed. Uh, New York City, we, we don't have really that many manufacturing, light manufacturing facilities, and this is a very unique business that we should really protect. Uh, and also, as she said, Mr. Giorgio, and your neighbors, uh, they have, uh, the propulsion contracts, Staten Island Ferry, the waterways, this is a very essential business, and I know as a, as a young man, my, my family, we used to buy propellers we had our boat, and I just wanted to say thank you, and, uh, commissioners, thank you, very good public hearing, and I want to thank you for trying to do with the Zoom and the cor- coronavirus. Thank you on behalf of the Civic Association, this is very good civic participation.
Thank you so much, we really do appreciate your call, and as suggested to the others, please do, um, take a look at our, uh, website, I think on Monday we'll be able to let you know when the continued hearing is, so that you can dial in again to the next one. But stay tuned, continue to listen, we have some, um, more to discuss with this applicant, and then, um, we really do appreciate all of your participation in this public hearing. So I'm gonna mute you as I do the others, okay, um, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And now, we're going to just invite generally anybody who hasn't already called in on this.
Can't say better, right? Put it, unmute it.
You're still muted. Okay, um. So I'm gonna ask anybody who hasn't already called in for this application, Tony, could you read the application number? Sorry.
Sure, it's 2020-9BZ, 2611, 123rd Street, Queens. I thought the community guy, Gene, was gonna call in, that's what they said.
So maybe he couldn't stay, maybe, you know, we went, we've gone on for a long time.
Yeah, because Mary... Mary emailed me and said he was trying to get in, so I don't know.
Okay, so I'm looking now at the participants to see if there's anyone else in the waiting room. We'll give it a little more time, but so, we can actually, uh, continue, so I, um... There's an idea that was brought up. I'm gonna unmute the applicants, or maybe they have to unmute themselves. Asked to unmute, okay, I'm asking them to unmute, and there's an idea. So, the property owner suggested, what if I could continue my commercial use? And you can hear that your neighbor is very upset about the idea that this turns into residential. And it seems like the property owner here of the subject site might be interested in maintaining a commercial use if you had a better opportunity to pursue commercial. So, um, you know, we can waive all different kinds of sections of the zoning resolution. And as Commissioner Ottley-Brown had suggested earlier, maybe your argument is that you're, one of your arguments is that your use is obsolete. Why is it obsolete? Because the building is in bad condition, let's just say, right? And the, and the section, what is it, 5261 or 5231, doesn't allow you to, um, upgrade the building. We have the authority to waive that. We also have the authority to allow you to, and, and Carla Costanza, our executive director, feel free to jump in and unmute yourself. Unmute.
To, to jump on that, Madam Chair, if I can ask the architect the question, I'm sorry, you cited, uh, this for the architect. You cited a section that prohibited the structural alteration, right? What section was that?
I think it's 54313, if I'm not mistaken, I could double.
But that's, let me ask you a question. Is, is that applicable to non-conforming uses that don't seek a change in use? Or is that, or is the 54 section of Article 5 dealing with non-complying conforming buildings?
That's why I say it might, it might be a 52. I, I don't have the book in front of me. But it, if I go to a conforming use, then obviously I have to comply with all the, the section 23. Right, underlying zoning. But if it's a non-conforming use, no structural modification is permitted to enhance the building.
I'm sorry, sir, is, is that true even if you're preserving the same use that was in existence since, let's say, 1961?
Well, I'll tell you how to.
Is that only applicable, is that only applicable when you change a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use?
No, it's, it's applicable, and I know the building department, which I've done several times, has an interpretation of the section. If I was to simply change the roof rafters on the building, or something simple as that, if the roof collapsed and I had to rebuild the building, it's not permitted. According to the Department of Buildings' interpretation of that section of law. They will force me to either abandon the building or abandon the use, or build a conforming use, conforming and complying. Obviously, that's why we're here, so.
So the prohibition, for example, of remodeling this building is strictly within the Article 5 realm and one specific provision, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all. I just wanted to, I was just piggybacking on what Madam Chair was starting to say, so.
It looks right. Pick up on this concept, right? Um, what if, rather than a whole, you know, brand-new building typology that's problematic in light of adjacent property? And anyway, you've already gotten existing use, and you're saying that they might be better if you had a more viable structure? What if you looked at what kind of waiver would be needed under your existing non-conforming use, right? You've got, you're allowed to use this site for commercial use. So the, what we're talking about is a waiver of that section that doesn't allow you to correct the structure or enlarge the structure or something, right? If you were to look at instead a variance that's like that, that's very close tied to actual physical condition on your site. Your site's narrow, your site has a non-conforming use on it. The problem is, the non-conforming use has this terrible condition with the existing building. And all we need to do is to be allowed to upgrade the existing building, make it structurally sound, maybe it's a little bigger, I don't know what, right? So maybe you should take a look at that. It seems like your neighbors would prefer that use after all of these decades and decades as it did. And maybe that...
Okay, I mean, it's, it's an option. Obviously, it's an option that we'd have to create the, the research for the B finding, I guess, if we go into that.
Yes.
Yes, so we would have to explore that. They could hear me?
It seems to me that that fairly easy B finding, go ahead, Charlie Brown, if you wanna speak.
I, I think it would be a fairly easy B and E finding to make. So you would go with, you would show an existing scenario. You would show that basically there could be no as-of-right scenario from the ground up, because you weren't allowed to enlarge it. So you could go from your existing directly to what you're proposing.
Okay, understood.
And given obsolescence issues, your income is probably really depressed.
As it is now, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's why I think it would be fairly easy.
What about the, all the yard requirements? How do you control the size of the building?
So the thing is about...
That's where they have the ability to waive certain as, certain aspects of the, of the zoning resolution.
No, 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 so, just to be clear, to interrupt, when it's a use that's not typical, that's not permitted in a neighborhood, there are no bulk requirements. So we don't have to waive them. The only thing we're waiving is the section that prevents you from enlarging or rebuilding the existing structure. So it's one waiver. It's a lot, in a certain way, it's a lot easier than all of this other stuff. Okay, so think about it, and actually, if you need more information on how to do this, contact both your project manager, Jelapranga, and Carla Costanza, the executive director, who can help guide you with this, okay? I see Commissioner Shonda's hand is up. Go ahead. Unmute.
Um, I just wanna make sure that in, if the current non-compliant use were to be allowed, if that's one of the waivers... You know, let's, if the applicant chooses to continue to have non-compliant use on the side, non-conforming use, non-conforming use on the side, then we will only grant the waivers of the section pertaining to enlargement. And I just want to make sure that that will not still trigger the self-created hardship with the, the, the site being subdivided.
Right, I'm not thinking it would, because if the site were longer, it'd still have this little substandard, dangerous, you know, I'm building in all the adjectives, building that doesn't have proper foundations and so on, it would need the same exactly, or even if on a bigger lot.
There is no effect. So you can do whatever you want?
Well, I guess we can leave.
So, and Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Not to mention that your uniqueness finding is really gonna morph into an obsolete, um, structure and not so much be dependent on the lot size.
It's not rentable, the woodshed.
Um, Commissioner.
For the neighborhood.
I still hope that you put a focus on the self-created hardship, because I'm, I'm still not convinced that we've, we've passed that hurdle in this hearing. So I, that you, uh, I think you pay particular attention to that in, in your papers.
Yeah.
Self-created hardship.
So I don't wanna belabor this anymore, we've been at this a long time. Go ahead, Commissioner Chiveta.
And I would, I would, I would pay attention to what Commissioner Ottley-Brown said during the review session with regard to the self-created hardship. And, uh, I think that's how you started to frame your, your, your discussion.
Which was what?
He stated there were going to be that, that, that there would be certain things that you could get, ask for relief from, and other things that you wouldn't be able to ask for relief from. For example, more units, you wouldn't be able to ask for more units because you had this very long through lot. Around those lines, I would, I would think that the same argument would kind of apply to continuing commercial use.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's kind of what we said.
I'm not sure it will, because his argument's gonna shift. It's not going to be that I'm the only narrow lot in, in the area, and I need to add floor area. It's now gonna be, I'm a commercial use that is obsolete, and I can't reconstruct.
I, I think what, I think the equivalent to the asking for two units is the, that no matter what the shape of the lot is, the 60, the pre-63 lot or the post-63 lot, if you had an, an existing building on the lot, you would never be, at any time, be allowed to enlarge it or rebuild it under the prohibition for a non-conforming use. So it wouldn't matter. So I, I kinda think that that's what the test is. If I need a waiver of this thing, would I have gotten the same, would I have needed the same waiver for the through lot? That's all. Okay, I think we've not exactly beaten the dog, but we've come up with some other ideas. And I think it's worth looking at those other ideas that might make this a better application. So I would like to then say that you're gonna need some time to put this together, consultation with project manager, executive director. So, anything else from the team? Any other questions?
I think we're okay here.
Okay, good. All right, so I wanna thank absolutely everyone for their participation, for the commissioners doing this all day. Well, we've been at this since 10 o'clock in the morning on Zoom with just very short breaks. It's not easy. I appreciate it. Doing, and I really appreciate the participation of the members of the public who were here for so long also. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you. Good night.
So there's no time limit. Whenever we're ready, they will submit, and then we're done.
We'll let you know with the hearing, next hearing data.
Thank you.
Tony, this concludes the hearing.
I'm sorry, this concludes the public hearing for June 16th, 2020, 10:00, 2 P.M. session.
Great, thank you, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.